Councilmember, ready?
Yes, sir.
Ready.
Very good.
Good evening, everyone. We're called to order this meeting of the Willow City Council. It's a regular meeting for Tuesday, January twenty-third, twenty-two forty-four. Item two on our agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. Vice Mayor Hudson with the honors.
Dan.
Hello.
What?
I have to wonder how many cities are still doing that.
A lot.
Hopefully, all of them are. Item three, roll call. City Clerk, Amos Hoover, please.
Councilmember Thomas.
Present.
Councilmember Sprague.
Present.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hudson.
Present.
Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Mayor is present.
Thank you, Amos. Item four, changes to the agenda. City Manager Marty Brown, any changes?
There are no changes.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers? Okay, thank you. Item five, public comment and consent calendar forum. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and vote unless council members or the city manager first request that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments about the three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff and or the audience. And by state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. First of all, is there any public comment tonight on any matters on the consent calendar? None? How about any public comment on any matters not on the agenda tonight? Anything? Mr. Asbury?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Vice Mayor. I had a request from Kathy over at the senior center that, I think Kathy McFessel, is that? There's a lot of enthusiasm about our group, our town hall meetings, but there's been very little communication in the last two meetings with causing people not to show up. And she's real concerned about wasting her time and the heat in the building. She would like to see all this progress and keep growing.
Okay, Mr. Asbury, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. We'll see to it.
Thank you. Any other public comment tonight on any matters not on the agenda? Anything? No? Okay, thank you. The consent calendar items, five A, register approval. Consider approval of the general checking, payroll, and direct deposit check registers. Item five B, the minutes approval. Consider approval of the minutes from the January ninth, twenty-two thirty-three meeting. Item five C, closed circuit TV, also known as CCTV inspection of city's remains. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and execute a contract with ATS Environmental Incorporated for twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and establish an overall project budget of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars for closed circuit TV inspection of the city sewer mains. Item five D, seven twenty-five South to Hyma Street, public access and utility easement. Consider adoption of a resolution accepting a ten-foot-wide public access and utility easement at seven twenty-five South to Hyma Street for development purposes. And item five E, Americans with Disabilities Act compliant civic center in Jensen Park upgrades. Consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment to Coastland's professional services agreement to provide design services to upgrade the civic center in Jensen Park with American with Disabilities Act, also known as ADA, compliant doors and pathways respectively. Pleasure to the council in reference to the consent calendar this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions with regard to five E. We don't necessarily need to pull it from consent, but I'd like to ask a question too, if I may.
Very good, Mr. Thomas.
The front of the building is, has a lot of single-pane glass. So when we're designing the new entryway, is it possible for us to redesign the entire facade there that's got the glass and do a little bit of energy saving? And then the second comment I have on the back door where we replace the access, if we could do a simple opener rather than complete redo of that door, we might save some money so we could do more ADA work in Jensen Park.
Councilmember Thomas, I think that's definitely something that we can look into. As far as the front of City Hall's facade, it's, I think we very well have the opportunity to look into that, but as we get through design, that will dictate what extent the current facade would need to be, you know, modified or reconstructed. And at that time, we could take a look at it and make sure that it complies with the requirements of the grant, and we can look into incorporating that as a possible component of the scope of work for that.
If that was possible, I think it would be energy smart, considering so much glass at the front and it's all single-pane. Can't do much about the U-Bank room at this point in time, but I think that would help stress up the front of the building as well.
Okay. And then as far as the other set of doors that you had referenced, we're going to need to take a look during design to see what the minimum requirement will be in order to get that up to the minimum maybe compliance. I think that the push buttons are definitely something that we know we need to incorporate, but during the design, we're also going to look at potentially replacing hardware and other components that we would need in order to comply with current operating pressures, opening, closing pressures, and other components that would be subject to ADA requirement.
Well, if we can save some money back there and use it in the park, that would be something I think would be worthwhile. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Wouldn't you like to pull that number because we can't pass the consent calendar as it's written? Couldn't we take that off and have it for future consideration? Mr. Thomas?
Well, if that's what you necessarily need to do, I thought it would be more of a direction to council to adopt that effort and have them move towards, see if they can incorporate those requests.
If I may, the action item is just simply to approve a contract amendment with Coastland at this time. That's really all the council's being asked to do. We're very, just at the very preliminary stages of the design work, and I think that direction is sufficient if that's amenable to the rest of the council.
We would work with the Coastland on implementing those into the design, so that...
Or figuring out how to work.
If it works, great. Then I have no other question.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Do you have consensus of the council moving forward with the council member Thomas's request?
We can certainly come back to the council too if you want to see the design.
Mr. Vaughn?
Well, I would move the consent calendar as presented.
Second, Councilmember Vaughn has moved to approve the consent calendar as presented. Councilmember Sprague has seconded. Further discussion?
Only thing I'd like to say is that sometimes people might think we just slipped these things past, but there's a lot of material that's been out and around on this, a lot of reading, a lot of information provided to us by staff. Thank you so much. So it's, these are items that are on the consent calendar because they're essentially, you know, basically done, ready to go, move forward, as opposed to being on the other calendars. Just want to let people know these are well documented, well dialogued, and well analyzed subjects.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Well said. Absolutely, absolutely. A lot of detailed information on all these items on the consent calendar, as always. Any further discussion? Mr. Hoover, since there are two resolutions on here, this would be a roll call vote, please.
Sir. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sprague?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
I'm passing Dennis' line.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Correction, three resolutions on that. Thank you. Item six, discussion and action calendar. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff and or the audience. When the mayor calls for a public comment, please raise your hand. Be acknowledged. While not required, the city requests that you please state your name clearly for the audio recording. By state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. In reference to public comment, I'll call for public comment on each item, just, just for the public's information as well. Is there any public comment at this time before we move on to item six eight? During that? Okay, thank you. Item six eight, proposed November twenty-two forty-four sales tax ballot measure. Discuss placement of a sales tax ballot measure on the, on November fifth, twenty-two forty-four presidential election ballot and direct staff return to the council at future date with sales tax measure ballot language for consideration and approval, as well as any other sales tax-related research results, policies, and/or legal opinions on this matter. City Manager Marty Brown, good evening again.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. The item that's before you is a request and recommendation by staff to take a look at the possibility of placing a sales tax on the November ballot. And there's four key considerations. There might be more that you would like to add to this discussion, but the key discussion items that staff's hoping that you'll give some clear direction on this evening, and if not, continue the item until the thirteenth and then possibly do it then. But on these items, so that we can craft the actual ordinance and come back and hopefully we're not doing what we affectionately call a lot of sausage making on the dais after we've written the ordinance. So the four main key items are to consider are how much would the sales tax actually be? One percent, one and a quarter percent, one and a half percent, more, less? I mean, there's all sorts of options, but those are the ones staff have presented. The second item is the duration. Is it an evergreen sales tax or is it got an expiration date? The third item is what kind of a sales tax expenditure oversight does the council want to see? Is it a committee? Is it a report? Is it town hall meetings? Is it all of those things? These are all things for the council to consider. And the fourth item is some statement, potentially a resolution. We'd have to work with the city attorney on the exact details of how to craft this, but if the council wishes to send a message to the community and the voters of exactly what kind of policy intent you have for a sales tax, if and when that passes, that is language we'd want to work with the city attorney on to make sure that there's no misunderstanding with the public, that it is a general sales tax, not a special sales tax. I'm sure there's a way to do that, but you know, of course, the devil's in the details. So if that's something that's of interest to the council, then we'd want to work with the city attorney on that as well. And of course, the immediate fiscal impact is approximately fifteen thousand dollars to put a sales tax measure on the ballot. As I think you're all aware, and probably the community as well, in order to put a sales tax measure on the November ballot, it does require a four-fifths vote. And so four out of the five of you at a minimum would have to agree to all of these different key items that I just listed out. I've added to this packet for your review a reminder of particular items from the mid-year budget, including the budget forecast, the general fund balance, and various sales tax scenarios that came from Andy Heath, our finance consultant at last week's meeting. Those are slides directly taken from his presentation. There's also the proposed ordinance language that came before the council back in October, November of twenty-two thirty-three. I added that as well, so you could see what was already approved at a November city council meeting at the time when the council initially attempted approving a fiscal emergency and placing a sales tax on the March ballot, which was unsuccessful. And then some regional sales tax comparison, that comes from a slide that I prepared for the council in the spring of twenty-two thirty-three to show the various sales tax measures that have already passed in the region within an hour and fifteen minutes of the city of Willows, and what's the kinds of funds that some of those are generating. I also, just as an example, provided a couple of reports from the city of Marysville under their one-cent sales tax. They were required to produce an annual report, and that was included as an example of the kind of reporting that possibly the council might want to consider. And for additional review was the twenty-two twenty-two city of Willow's community survey results. In the event that the council wishes to move forward with item four of creating some sort of resolution or policy that explains the council's intent for the sales tax, perhaps some of that language would come out of that twenty-two twenty-two survey. And so that's just meant to be a guiding and informing document. And finally, I also included informational material that was actually used for the half-cent sales tax for the city of Orland in twenty-sixteen. So those are all the things for consideration, and staff is looking for direction on this evening, and that concludes my presentation, unless you have questions for me.
Thank you, Marty. Who would like to begin?
I would like to.
Councilmember Vaughn, please.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask that we have this dialogue in this manner, that we first of all agree if we do or do not need a sales tax, that we second of all agree as to an amount, one and a half, one, whatever. And then third, and finally, we get into that circuitous dialogue about how to sell it, which is most of what the material you presented has to do with, is if we need one, let's say yes or no to that. If we have a percentage we want to target, let's say yes or no to that and agree on it. And then let's talk about all this sunsetting and, and you know, grandfathering and all this other stuff, including the Orland's material, all of which seem to be aimed solely at selling it to the public. So I don't think they're the same. We get mired down in the selling subject and don't actually deal with. Do we need a sales tax? Yes or no? And if so, how much? That's what I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Thank you.
Could I add one thing? I actually gave all of you something this evening that was last minute, which I know the public isn't privy to, but, but it was a list of upcoming items. It was part, most of that was part of the June twenty-three budget approval process and the staff report, but there is a sheet of all the kinds of ups, both one-time and ongoing expenses that are, will be coming up in the next, you know, two, four, five years. And Councilmember Vaughn, I just brought that, I wanted to bring that to your attention because I think it'll inform your discussion about the percentage of the sales tax in light of how, how large the deficit is.
I think there's no doubt, and I hope that there's no doubt amongst anybody in this room and hopefully beyond this room, that we do need a sales tax, that the financial structure of the business called the city of Willow's is in severe state of financial difficulty, and that the realistic efforts to create revenue and or reduce expenses, and we'll go to reduce expenses, we're already at bare minimum. We've said that over and over for as long as I've been here. We run thin, we, we run short, we don't do things because we don't have the people to do them. So, and clearly, again, the revenue streams are just not there, and the sheriff's contract, we all know about that. So I can't imagine anybody in this room and anybody who's listened to these presentations and these meetings would actually think we do not need a sales tax. So I submit to this group and to anyone listening that we need a sales tax. Yes or no? And I say yes. Now we can move on to how much?
Everybody here can say yes to that.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. We'll go with Mr. Vaughn's question. I think that's...
I would say yes that we need a sales tax.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, thank you. Vice Mayor Hudson?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Sprague?
My concern is, is more how much, because if you read what we're looking at here...
That's the next question for us. That's the next question. If you say yes to a sales tax, then we'll talk about how much. Make it people wrapping them together.
I would look at it and say how much first, from my perspective. So I'll decline to answer your first question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Yes, I'm in favor of pursuing a sales tax. We...
Okay. Do we now then submit to our judgment, how much?
Absolutely.
And if you, if we come up, I guess if it's a certain how much, you'll say yes, and if it's a certain how much, I mean, I don't want to presuppose what you might think or say, but, but I think the how much is the next question. And I submit to you all and everybody listening that the reality is that we need to take some tough love here and make some tough decisions that are not going to be popular, and that is that we go for one point five.
Okay. Mr. Vaughn has recommended a one-point-five percent sales tax increase. Mr. Thomas?
Well, when I looked at it, we have a structural deficit that's nine-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand for this fiscal year, and in twenty-four, twenty-five, it's nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight. If we do pass the sales tax at any amount, we won't see any of that money until at least May, possibly even June of twenty-five. So we are down at nine-sixty-eight for the month for the year twenty-four, twenty-five. And the projection is that we're down one-point-two, almost one-point-three for twenty-five, twenty-six. So in my mind, one percent is a break even. So one percent is a given in my book. And so then the question revolves around what is the quarter percent, fifty percent, or seventy-five percent above the one percent bring us? Now, we have, we'll have no reserves at the end, and everybody says we need at least two months or seventeen percent reserve. Our expenses for the twenty-three, twenty-five mid-year adjustment was six-point-eight million, so seventeen percent is one-point-two million dollar reserve we needed. If we pass a one and a quarter, it brings us about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars more than we currently enjoy. If we were to put fifty percent of that into reserves to build our reserves, that's a, takes us six and a half years to do that. A one-point-five percent brings us just under seven-hundred thousand. We could resume, correct our reserves in three and a half years. Three-hundred-and-forty-six thousand each year. And a one-point, or a seven-five percent increase actually brings us just under one-point-four, and we could correct their reserves at one-point-seven years, almost one and a half years. And with our expenses continuing to rise and our need to provide recreation and everything else, my bare minimum is one and a half percent. And maybe we should think long and hard about maybe one and three-quarters. If I may. One and three-quarters. Maybe we could have that percentage, and I don't know if it's possible, if we could sunset one and three-quarters in five years and then leave evergreen one and a half, if that's possible. But I think we need some immediate influence of cash to fix our sidewalks, fix a whole host of things that we need to fix.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, I, I agree with all the financial data. It's clearly what we need is much greater than, I want the one-point-five because it stays under nine. And in one point, or the higher numbers hit nine, and I don't think I want to go to nine. I think we'll have to do this in more than one step, but I think we need to do the hard part now, which is one-point-five. And you're right, we still won't be good, but maybe we can create other revenue generating options by having a little more money to do the business of the city. So that would be my hope, is that we could leverage this as opposed to, you know, really go too far afield.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Vice Mayor Hudson?
I was gonna let... Oh, Mr.... Okay. Councilmember Sprague, go.
Yeah, I concur with what Rick is saying about the projections here. From my math and to the, by the suggestion of Mr. Heath, two percent gets us to the seventeen percent recommended reserve. So I'm not promoting or supporting a tax increase. That's not my point. My point is, is to look at this and say, if you're going to go for this, go for it enough that it in fact cures the problem, which is in fact building up a reserve that is recommended by, by the experts that deal with this, and that's two percent. I'm not promoting that. Don't misinterpret me. I'm just saying, if we're going to take a big step, if the council agrees to take a big step to move forward, then, then cure the problem. Don't just deal with a little bit of the tidbit of the, of the symptoms. Again, I'm not promoting one way or the other.
Anything further, Mr. Sprague?
No.
Vice Mayor Hudson?
Yeah, so there's definitely a lot of numbers to look at on this. One thing is, is to build up the city's reserve to offer the city and the citizens what they're looking for. And what are they looking for? They're looking for new businesses to come in. They're looking for a rec department. They're looking for things to do. They're looking for the activities. And for a town to provide those, we need a sales tax and able to provide a fire department that's able to respond to our calls, provide, you know, law enforcement, those things that we're looking for, then we have to pass a sales tax. The percentage has always, is something that I've been thinking long and hard on. I look at the reserve amounts and the, you know, where they're saying they could go. I also look at possible future projects coming into the town and how those can affect, hopefully, the city's income as well over the term of having a sales tax in place. So with, you know, looking at, you know, we have the Basin Street project, which, you know, hopefully we can start getting that off the ground here in the next five to ten years and really moving forward and getting some progress going there. I honestly, I feel like the one and a half percent would do the town the most, the most good. I think it'd be the most well-received of the different levels. It doesn't put us quite at that seventeen percent. It leaves us a little shy. I understand where force is coming from at the two percent. Looking strictly at the numbers, however, we also got to look at it from a sell, a sellability standpoint. And I think the one and a half is something that if we get it out there in front of the people, we show them over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, hey, this is what the sales tax has done for Willow's. Orland's already shown us what it can, what it can do, you know, a little bit. So if we can do that, then we can talk what, what now, where to go from here. I'm definitely leaning towards a one-point-five percent. It doesn't get us up to that seventeen or two months, but it does get our reserves up to where they have not been the last couple of years, and that's fair to say, and get us out of our deficit, get us those recreational things that we've been, the recreation that we've been needing, as well as start allowing us to get the cash flow to start drawing in the new businesses. Hopefully, we can capitalize on big projects going on in the area such as the site reservoir, creating lots of jobs, long-term jobs, and hopefully start drawing those people to our town rather than one of the other surrounding towns. I want to be selfish. I want them to live here. I don't want them to live elsewhere. So if we're able to start that with a sales tax of one and a half percent and watch that grow and hopefully turn into an exponential growth for the city, I think that'd be the best way to go.
Okay, one and a half percent.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Well, I've... Yeah, Rick, thank you for running down those numbers for the public's benefit especially. Thank you very much. All real numbers, actual numbers. I've been, I've been, you know, thinking back and forth and thinking about it since our last meeting constantly. I've been back and forth between one percent, which, as Rick said, is our break-even number, and one-point-five percent. We need one-point-five percent. And, Mr. Sprague, I, I agree with your comments. Two percent would be great. Selling two percent would be an extremely high bar. I'm confident that, you know, that the voters would, would approve a one percent. The one-point-five, hopefully that'll be approved. That's what, or could be approved. That's what we, that's what we really need by far. I mean, it's, the evidence is in front of us. It's been well stated by my colleagues this evening. One-point-five percent is what we need. I, so I'm, I will also go with the, you know, agree with the one-point-five percent recommendation because that's, that's what it's going to take to at least, you know, for Willow's to maintain, to remain a full-service city, one-point-five percent. With that?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I want to just share some more because again, I thank Rick for putting the dollars on the table. We've all seen them, and I hopefully some of you have seen them and heard them enough times. But we did do a study, and the men and women and people who live in this community who will have to vote yes on the sales tax, sixty-seven percent of them said that they wanted more youth activities. How do you get that? We need the sales tax. Ninety-seven percent said they wanted safe neighborhoods. To me, safe neighborhoods are sidewalks you don't trip on, lights that light the sidewalk and roads that are safe and clean and not full of chunky pieces and parts. There's, there was, let's see, sixty-seven percent said that there was a great need to have additional funding for their operation of the city. And let's see, what is this one? More than half the response supported conceptual majority requires revenue measure. So there was, that was fifty-five percent seemed to think we need more money. Thirty-nine percent said that the more, that they wanted the service of Willow's to be exceptional, and so on and so forth. Throughout this study, these people who filled this form out, cared enough to fill it out and send it in, said they wanted more for their city that they live in. They want to get more from the city they live in. I don't, I cannot in my mind calculate how you can want this and know it's important to have and not understand that you have to finance it by some means. And the means is a sales tax. Economic development is a nebulous concept. Wanting it and saying the words doesn't get it done. But sales tax is real. Sales tax will go to the bottom line, and sales tax will pay for these things and maybe help with some of the things you showed us tonight that are on the long list of what we're going to have to do in the future. And if anybody wants to go through that, it's right here, so I don't.
Very good, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I take you back?
Yes, Mr. Sprague.
Okay. So the same survey that you're reading from that says these, all these... Okay, so the same survey that you're reading from that says these all, all these people. Want these services. That same survey says government tends to waste. And mismanage our tax offer. Seventy-five percent of the people believe that.
I didn't mention that one.
Okay, taxes are too high. Sixty-two percent. Agree that the taxes in the city are already too high. And wasted inefficiency of the government, of local government, sixty-three percent. So there's, there's the problem that you're going to be up against.
We, we will be up.
But there, there's the problem the city will be up against. And convincing the people that you're going to spend the prop, the money properly. I do, I, I don't. That's, that's the issue that that we're going to be up against. The other thing is that I, uh, if I might, Mr. Mayor, take a few minutes here. So many times when I was working at the state legislature and we watched and see it to see what the state was doing for taxes. And my frustration and the frustration of the conservative bent at the, at the state level. Was that state bureaucrats would take a look at statistical comparisons and say that we're selling. The state is selling so many widgets within the state and we're getting two cents per widget. Gosh, if we increase the tax on that widget, we'll increase our income. And what they discovered was, and they, they did it statistically. Instead of looking at dynamic and seeing what is the public's reaction to that tax increase. Let me use a prime example of that and it got Gray Davis uh, recalled, if you'll recall. That the state looked at it to see how many new cars that California was selling in a given year. And they decided to raise the transfer tax by what was it seventy-eight dollars or something like that, a nominal amount, but seventy-eight dollars. What happened was that was the statistical comparison and that's what they based it on. The dynamic comparison was that that took the buyer. Over the threshold of wanting to buy new cars. And the end result, the dynamic comparison showed that the state actually lost. Twenty-five percent of the new car sales. So not only did they not get the new tax that they imposed, that they no longer got the sales tax that they used to get. So their tax income went, actually went down. Same thing happened with cigarettes. The same thing happened with candy, the other, other things that they raised the taxes on. Here's my, my concern here locally. I did some comparisons this morning with fuel costs. Um, fuel costs in Orland. Right now is Maverick, which just opened up is for diesel fuel, four point three nine, uh, four dollars and thirty-nine cents a gallon. Pilot is four sixty-three. S, whatever that S stands for. I don't understand that gas station, but they're four sixty. Uh, four sixty-five here in Willow's Diamond is four sixty-nine. Chevron is five twenty-nine, Gandy and Staley is five eleven, and I forget what the other one was. Here's my point is that the city of Willow's gains on fuel costs. Um, only two hundred and forty-three, or two hundred and forty-two thousand approximately, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year. In fuel costs. The city of Orland, fifty-three percent of their income is based on fuel costs.
Got the big gas station.
Pardon me?
They got the big gas stations.
They got the big gas stations and as a result of that, they're able to keep the cost down. So I've talked to some truckers. That, that buy their fuel here in Willow's at this point in time. And you, if you tack on a percent or two or whatever. Of a, a five dollar a gallon purchase, you're adding another five or six cents to their purchase. In addition to what they're already paying for higher cost, fuel costs in Willow's, the concern is, and this is what I'm hearing back from truckers. They're willing to buy it local so they don't have to wait in line. But if we increase their cost of fuel by another five cents per gallon. On, on this and they go up there and fill up for, with a hundred, a hundred and fifty gallons of gas, it's worth their time to go ahead and sit up there. So now the dynamics is that we will lose the income from the fuel we are selling as opposed to. That's the dynamic. That's just one category. The other categories I haven't looked at yet, but that's the thing that we have to concern. Are we looking at this? Statistical comparisons as opposed to the dynamic comparisons and that's what we need to consider as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, isn't the sales tax rate in Orland eight percent?
Sales tax in Or, they, they approved a one half percent.
So what is it? It's eight percent, isn't it?
Orland is seven point seventy-five.
And they're going to go up another.
They're looking at it.
Yeah, so it'll be their sales, uh, just for us if it'll help, all of the people who come up I five and down I five and turn west on one sixty-two. Have hundred gallon tanks and they all fill up in Willow's. They don't care.
They, I'm sorry.
They all fill up in Willow's. They do not drive to Orland. And they will continue to fill up in Willow's.
I'm talking about the locals that buy here locally.
I'm talking about who's going to really pay the sales tax benefit our city and that's the visiting folks. That come up and down the freeway are going to pay the majority of the sales tax impact that we're asking for.
Another aspect of that is we also cannot troll, control what Diamond or Chevron or AMPM are charging, is charging for gas. They're buying gas and fuel and diesel at the same rate that any place in Orland is. What they're charging is based off the current market in Willow's. They're not basing off of Orland. They're hitting the people that are on the freeway that are stopping in Willow's before they see the prices in Orland. They're not, they're not comparing themselves to Orland. They're comparing themselves to each other and they're marketing based off of that. Even though they're paying the same per barrel as everybody else in Orland. That's, we can't control that as a city. Alls that we can control is what we can and that's a sales tax. That's the tax prices. But the market value is, it's capitalism. They're going to charge what they want. It's a supply and demand. You're correct. If you charge more for something, then the demand's going to go down. That's, you're a hundred percent correct enough for us. That's, that is how the world works. However, it's not just fuel that we're looking at. We're looking at the Walmart. And we're looking at all these other places that people are stopping at to shop at. That aren't just the Willow's citizens that are here shopping and buying it. We're looking at the freeway people that are. That are pulling up. They're not getting on their phones and saying, well, is the price of, you know, a new toaster at Walmart. More than me going to Orland or to Red Bluff. No, they're going to pull off. They're going to go to Walmart. They're going to buy their household appliances, their goods that they need. And they're going to be on their merry way back to whatever town they came in from. And that's the, that's where I'm targeting with this. And. Yes, I still believe the benefit is going to outweigh. Um, any negatives that we see from adding a sales tax to that. And another thing is, sorry, let me finish real quick.
Yep.
Is, um, three and five believe taxes are too high in the city. I'm curious as to what taxes the citizens are paying that are too high. I know we have this, this, the sewer rate is one thing that everyone has a problem with. I get that. Is there other ones that I'm obviously not aware of right now or is it just that one tax that we're. We're stuck to a. We're stuck to a contract that we have and an appraisal that was done. And that the price is set at what it was, not by any of our decisions, not by anybody's decision other than the company that got the contract. So I'm wondering if there's something that us as a council or the city is saying, we pay too high in taxes because we don't have a sales tax. We don't have one at all right now. So how are taxes too high? And that's what I, I'm curious about. Um. And so that's just something that I'm kind of. That when I saw that, it kind of threw me off when, um, I did read that as well. So. Um, if there's anybody that's able to answer that question, I'd be happy to know what taxes are too high within our city limits. Because right now the sales tax is only coming to the city. You mentioned the state. Yes, and the difference between the state and the city is the state doesn't have Willow's in its best interest. A sales tax within the city limits has Willow's in its best interest because it's only going to Willow's, hopefully only helping us. Where at the state level and what the politicians are doing at that level is. Well, sometimes I just don't even know what they're doing. But, um, this sales tax is strictly just for the people that live here. So if I pay it, I know it's coming back to me in a different way. Um, and I wouldn't ask anybody to do anything that I'm not willing to do myself. So that's. That's my measure. Yeah, that's my two cents on the matter.
Evan, I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought those points up. Those are the same two points I was going to, to mention as well and I will briefly. The question on taxes too high. The Willow's sales tax right now is at the minimum, at, at the minimum amount is imposed by the state, seven point two-five percent. And like I said, Evan, we, the city Willow's receives one percent of the seven point two-five percent, one percent. The surrounding cities, uh, that, that staff presented on attachment five. With the exception of Reading, that owns a very successful electric company, by the way. And Yuba City, which is a, which is a rapidly growing city. All of our surrounding sister cities, Anderson, Red Bluff, Corning, Orland, Williams, Calusa, Oroville, uh, Chico at one percent recently passed. Marysville, Paradise, Woodland and Clearlake, Clearlake with one point five percent. They're all, they're, they're ahead of us. They're ahead of us in the ballgame and the scoreboard because they've had a. A sales tax measure in place sometime. So they're, they're reaping the benefits and like I said, Evan. That, you know, uh, Mr. Sprague, uh, pointed out to, to diesel sales with, with the truck stops. Well, there are truck stops in Williams, there are truck stops in Orland and Corning and, and south and north and beyond, Donegan. Uh, you know. And, and moving all up and down, up and down I five, those, those diesel purchases are freeway, are freeway truckers. The two bulk plants here, Gandy and Staley and Huntington's are both in the county. They're not in the city. So the city doesn't, doesn't receive any sales tax from those fuels. I buy, I buy my fuel from Gandy and Staley, uh, a bulk plant. Because of the nature of, of my business. Uh, if there was a bulk plant within the city limits, I would purchase from that bulk plant. But the Gandy and Staley is, is, is a fine, outstanding local company, uh, owned and operated by outstanding local people. Uh, the city is not receiving any, any of that money, Mr. Sprague, that you mentioned, Gandy and Staley. You didn't mention Huntington's, I did. But those are the two, those are the two bulk plants. And sure, Orland, uh, with, with their truck stops, absolutely. That's where they're, that's where. Their half cent sales tax measure has been so successful because of the huge volume of diesel sales. From, from trucks on I five, uh, transporting our goods, you know, every good and services that, that, that all of us, uh, uh, as humans. Uh, utilize, uh, is on a truck, at least one truck at some point and, and they're capitalizing. It'd be wonderful if we could capitalize with a, with a truck stop within the city limits at, at some point. I, I, I certainly hope that that could happen, but. Um, I think this is really an apples to oranges comparison. Because it's, you know, like Evan said, right now we're operating at our minimum level of one percent. The surrounding cities cannot, can't operate at that either. That's why they have imposed a sales tax. That's why we're, you know, obviously discussing the sales tax major, major tonight. And like I said, Evan, I mean, uh, the, the state of California doesn't do this in favors. Absolutely, absolutely not. But those are, those are just some of my thoughts for, you know. You know, you have to think about in the two one in reference to, you know, the question about, you know. Willow's residents taxes are too high, like, like, you know. We have seven point five percent in the minimum, minimum sales tax. We have a, a transient occupancy tax, T O T tax on the hotels, which are, which are vastly, I mean, ninety-nine percent out of town individual paying. You know, travelers paying those, uh, uh, those receipts, uh, many of which are Thunder Hill visitors, obviously. And it, same thing, you know, and the city, the city recovers a large amount of, of uh, T O T revenue, uh, fortunately. From, uh, from, uh, you know, from, from our hotels. And, and those customers aren't, aren't shopping around, you know, looking for a cheaper T O T rate. It just doesn't work. So Evan, I agree with, I agree with your comments. I just wanted to make those statements and I won't belabor that subject.
May I rebuttal a couple of the comments by both of you?
Yes, Mr. Frank.
First off, I mean, maybe I didn't make myself clear. I understand thoroughly that the I five corridor is a, is a travel route from people from. Canada to Mexico that are going up and down the freeway and they shop here and they spend. What I'm concerned about is that the impact that the adverse impact on our locals. That's, that's the concern that I've got. Second, to respond to your, your fuel situation and you buy it from Gandy and Staley and that, as I do too. Uh, contrary to the response that we got from the inquiry from the city. Uh, manager, I talked directly to the job. And using Gandy and Staley as a good example. The local tax that they collect. If it's in the nine, five, nine, eight, eight. Uh, area or whatever area code that the purchaser is in. And if you go in and you use your credit card, it always asks you what zip code that you're actually from. Number one, to verify your credit card, but number two. They, they have an accountant that specifically says, oh, that purchaser is from Los Angeles, the local sales tax that they collect. Then they have to send it to Los Angeles or they send it to Calusa or they send it to Red Bluff or wherever that purchaser is from. So now with, we pass a local sales tax, Gandy and Staley and the other jobber will in fact be required. To collect the local sales tax on the fuel that they sell and then send it to the city of the nine, five, nine, eight, eight.
Uh, so your, your question that you asked me earlier today, my understanding was you were asking about purchasing a car or a trailer from a dealer. And so my response was from a dealership, the money goes back to wherever the car or vehicle resides.
That's.
Now, I didn't know you were also asking me about. Gas, so I, you know, other things. I thought it was just about purchasing a vehicle from a dealership.
And if I may also force, we sell gas at the racetrack and we have zip codes all over the country. We don't distribute that money.
I've never heard of that.
On that. I, I, I don't know if it's true or not. I'm just surprised. I didn't believe that fuel was dispersed based on purchasers zip code.
Yeah.
That's a fact.
That's a fact.
I've never heard of that and I'll verify it tomorrow. The, the information I gave you today came from both H D L.
All of us who go to Chico and buy gas and get, we get the money.
Right. I suppose that when I purchase gas here, it goes to Marysville. Yeah, I mean, I've, I've never heard of such a thing. I've never heard of that before. Um, I'm, I, the answers I gave you came from H D L and from Andy Heath, their advisor today. They did not come directly from me. I'm more than happy to follow up with H D L. They know exactly all about where taxes come and go. So I can get that information to all of you tomorrow.
Well, H D L did put out a memo that does talk about. Any items that are being delivered to the nine, five, nine, eight, eight zip code to the city Willow's. They have to pay, those distributors pay that local tax. If it's delivered to, and the, the debate becomes, is it the, is it within the city limits or the nine, five, nine, eight, eight area code?
When you say delivered, do you mean if they buy something online?
Amazon.
Because when you buy things online, it goes into a pool for the county that's distributed between the agencies.
Thing that is delivered to the nine, five or to the city, to the, the resident.
Like mailed, you mean, literally mailed to, right? That when you say deliver, you mean.
Well, you know what we should do? Let's just let, put this on an investigative position because that's all Greek to me. Because delivered is not the same as purchased.
Right.
Because then you're talking about all the county homes, north of town, northeast of town. All their, everything that they're buying is then coming to the city instead of the county. And that doesn't, I mean, you're talking all the way up to County Road thirty-nine. It's still considered Willow's. They have a nine, five, nine. So you're telling me that when they swipe their debit card or credit card at an Orland gas pump. That. Gas tax is coming to Willow's. I, yeah, I'd be really interested in hearing H D L's two cents on that because I'm not buying that per dollar.
Well, you know, I have to say I'm a little disappointed because we've been talking about a sales tax for several months now. And anytime you want a presentation from H D L, just let me know and I'll get them here and they can answer all your questions. We could have done this. Three or four months ago, um, and now we're having the conversation. The night when I'm hoping to get some direction from the council on what you'd like to see in ballot, right? But if you'd like me to bring back, um, H D L to give a presentation, we can, I can get that on the, on the agenda as soon as possible.
No.
No.
I don't want to hear. Just find out if gas purchased in Chico or Orland or Corning comes to us because I don't believe it does.
Will do.
I don't believe it does either, but well, I'm not.
Counting at Gandy and Staley. Uh, just for correction, um, Madam City Manager, I did ask both questions. And not only about the purchase of, of a, a vehicle. But my first question was if, if it was the nine, five, nine, eight, eight or the city limits. Now I tested this Sunday, went to Lowe's. And bought some lumber and bought some appliances for a rental of mine. And I asked them specifically, if you deliver this, what is my sales tax? And what would you do? And they pulled it up and said, oh, nine, five, nine, eight, eight doesn't have a local sales tax. So all of the tax that they collect. So all of the tax that they collect will stay in the city of, of Chico. I said, okay, if we increase the sales tax by a percent, then they said, if we deliver it to you, we will have to calculate it on whatever percentage of the local tax, and then we will send the city of Willow's the local tax. So I asked them, I said, okay, if I live in the nine five eight, nine five nine eight eight zip code, but I live outside the city limits, how do you charge this, the increased local sales tax? And she says, we have no idea what your city limits are, all we look at is the zip code.
Okay, again, well, the answer I gave that's in the memo to all of you this evening, and there's a hard copy on the dais, came from H D L and Andy Heath, and that particular question was answered by H D L. So I asked the question to them the way I thought I understood it from you, if I misunderstood, I apologize. And I can go back and ask them again, but again, if the council, you know, rather than have this back and forth, I think it's better to just, if this is a topic that interests the councils, to bring H D L here to answer all your questions about transaction use taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, uh, before we move on, uh, would the council like to hear from H D L in the immediate near future?
No.
David says no, uh, Rick?
Hmm, just want an answer to the question, it's not that hard, I don't need somebody to stand at the mic and tell me.
Not to, not to hold up our conversation tonight, no.
Okay, thank you, yes or no, Mr. Sprague?
Well, again, I think the conversation that we're having, what we're trying to determine is what is the level of the tax that you're talking about. All I'm asking, I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just trying to suggest that we look at all of the dynamics that are going to go involved. What we're discussing, what we're going to do, but if you want to move on, let's.
Yeah, thank you, we're going to move on, thank you, Mr. Sprague, yeah, I agree, we, we don't need to hear from H, H D L this time. So, uh, Mr. Thomas?
I would see, I would, if it requires a motion, that we move forward with a one and a half percent sales tax.
Well, you do have other items on here, you're not going to address those other ones?
Well, can we address them as we go?
Sure.
Based on what Mr. Vodden asked.
I think it's just sort of a policy direction, I don't think you need to make a motion.
Uh, yeah, I think we have a, I think we have a gentleman's handshake on the one point five for now.
Okay.
And then we can move on to the sunset and the oversight.
So consensus of the council at this point.
One and a half.
One and a half and we need a sales tax increase.
Consensus of, uh, consensus majority of the council with one point five percent sales tax.
Place of sale, there's a whole paragraph in here on place of sale, section six.
Um, uh, Councilmember Vodden, what was your third question?
Uh, well, yeah, we, we know we need a sales tax, we agree consensually, we agree, we know, we've sort of agreed on one point five, we have. So the next thing was, how do we present it? And, and there's so many variables that we've been presented, uh, sunsets and grandfathers and, and you know, how we sell this thing. So I think this is where we get into, we have to agree we're going to do this, and then we can talk about how. And, uh, and, and I'm, I believe the how is face to face with the people. One to one, group meetings, talk dialogue, talk numbers, Forrest is correct as far as trusting government money and their use of public funds, there's no doubt about that, it goes all the way across every spectrum of government. Uh, and it is the perception, thanks in part to the media, but also thanks in part to reality. So we, that's a fact. Uh, I personally am not going to waste anybody's money, I am more attentive to other people's money than my own. I don't believe Forrest Sprague would waste anybody's money if he was in charge of managing the revenue that we created. I don't think that Evan or Gary or Rick Thomas is going to sit back and let this money get pissed away because we got it and that's all we had to do was get it, now it's up to us to, I won't say piss away again, piss away again. Um, therefore, I don't quite accept that, that we, this dais and the people that we're dealing with and those folks over there are going to let this money get, validate the claim that many people have and feel mostly out of just bad information and incomplete information that the government's inefficient and wastes money. And, and beyond that, if they want to go that far. So I think the, the third question, long answer, Gary, so sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Well said, Mr. Vodden, no, well said, very good. Uh, so how do we present it, uh, why don't, could we move that to the, uh, end of the conversation and tackle with the others? Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I mean, I'm curious, if, if, at some point, I would like to know, you know, we might have to talk about alternatives as, as some of this too, so.
They're not alternatives, they're additions.
Thank you. So, uh, next question would be, uh, should the sales tax measure be an evergreen sales tax? Or should it have an expiration date, if not an evergreen, you know, with no expiration date? When should the tax expire and how likely is it that the city will no longer need a sales tax in ten year? Councilmember Thomas, thoughts?
Uh, we will need a sales tax in ten years, I can, I can foresee that. I think every city in the state of California is looking at the same thing, so I would say that. If it's one and a half percent, I would say it's evergreen. Um, again, one point seven five for five years, I could see that sunsetting to a one and a half for the, for evergreen.
Okay, great, so, uh, at, at one point five percent and evergreen, okay, Mr. Vodden?
What does evergreen mean?
Go away. No expiration date.
No expiration date.
Never goes away?
Right.
Excellent, cause that's the reality of life, have you ever seen one go away? Let me know if you have, I want to know about it.
When I see inflation go away and deflation come in, then I'll believe in a sunset. But I don't see deflation ever taking over our towns, I see inflation always coming in. So I'd have to stay with an evergreen. If you want to do a sunset clause, it needs to be far out in the future, it has to be a fifteen or sixteen, so it's on the even years, or a twenty year sunset clause. Because in ten years, you will hopefully be having other sources of income coming in. For example, the Basin Street project, um, maybe a new, our own truck stop, things like that, we're not going to start seeing those monies in five years. We'll start seeing it in ten, and from there, we just got to start building, so I'm going to go with an evergreen.
Okay, Evan, thank you, Mr. Sprague, evergreen or, uh, expiration date?
I would, I would like to see an expiration date and something a little bit closer, if you're going to do it, do it closer. If you go ten years, it is, it is all for all intents and purposes, evergreen. I'm old enough to remember when I got discharged out of the Navy that Governor Brown said that we're going to go to a temporary four and a half percent sales tax in California, that was nineteen seventy four, I believe, seventy three or seventy four. And, uh, here we are, we're now at what? Seven and a quarter percent sales tax, so none of it ever goes away. Um, so if you're going to put one on there, my suggestion is that it's not going to go away, so don't try and sell it. Quote unquote, sell it, cause it's going to go away, because it's not going to go. So that's a, that's a false leader, I think it's going to be more damaging to the cause that you want to move forward with the sales tax. I also am, my, my concern here is that you're not being realistic on what the actual need is. And I do look forward to the day that, like you point out, that we, we have, start having some economic development that starts producing money into the city coffers, but nevertheless. Anyway, that's my comment.
May I, may I add something to that?
Yes.
When we say evergreen, it is always the people's choice to have us bring this back to a ballot vote to get rid of the sales tax. If in ten years, they don't like it and they start, that's why we have a section here for the citizens to sit in. They can bring it back to us to have us push it back to the ballot to remove the sales tax as well. So we say evergreen, we're not saying it's set in stone, as, but the reality is, if we pass a sales tax, most likely, yes, it will be long term. However, you will have council members change, you will have changes going on in this town. And if for some reason we ever get to the point where the economic development hits a point where we don't need it, that is up to the citizens to decide and it can always come back to another vote. So, yes, I want an evergreen, just remember that, you know, when my kids are able to vote, they may decide that we don't need the sales tax anymore. But that is also just a reminder that we're not above what our citizens want, so. And they want the perks of the city having money and this is how the city gets money to spend it for them, so.
Absolutely, Evan, well said, yeah, very good point. No, I, I also agree with the, you know, no sunset clause at this time on an evergreen, and like Evan said, if, if the wish were to change, if this is successful, that can always be, uh, proposed, uh, on another, on a future ballot. And, uh, you know, with the no sunset clause or, you know, going, uh, the evergreen, you know, method, uh, it's going to take a number of years for us to actually reap all of the positives and, you know, up, up toward, up toward change. And, you know, as you mentioned, rising costs, uh, out of control inflation at this time, that's, uh, rising costs are never going to go. They haven't, they've never gone away at my lifetime. So I think it'd be foolhardy to think that, uh, a cost will actually, over the long term, uh, uh, a drop. So I, I am also in favor of the evergreen clause.
May, may I point out something that we're oversighting in regard to the citizens being able to overturn this, may I point that out?
Yes, briefly?
Briefly, as you point out here and as staff points out here, to be able to put this on the ballot, it's going to cost fifteen thousand dollars just to put it on the ballot.
Yes.
In addition to that, if the citizens out here wanted to educate the public, we also have the estimate of another ten thousand dollars to be able to educate the public on supporting the sales tax. So now you're looking at the public, unlike us taking it out of the city coffers that these good people have already paid for, the twenty five thousand dollars, you're suggesting that these people need to raise another twenty five thousand dollars to sunset the tax. That won't happen, that won't happen, so again, if you're going to do it, it's evergreen. It's pointless, it's, it's a false leader to be able to suggest that you're going to be able to change.
Well, Mr. Sprague, uh, agree, absolutely, that's what the Horvich has said, evergreen. Pardon me?
He was, he was referring to my statement that the citizens could bring it back to a ballot and, and that the cost would be, that the cost would be back on the city again.
Absolutely.
Spending that money, absolutely, you were not, you're not wrong. That'll be their decision, and then I'm just saying that there's, we're not, we're putting this into their hands, this isn't us putting it in our hands automatically voting this into place, this is in their hands, whether it stays, whether it goes, whether it's even a thing that is able to happen. The fifteen thousand dollars is, um, is good, is going to be well money spent, I think, to put this on the ballot because it would be money well spent, it's a great investment, um, to keep our city incorporated, to keep our city ours past the next year and a half.
Absolutely, absolutely, well said, again, Evan, it's an investment in our community, absolutely. Uh, majority council consensus, uh, will be the evergreen. Um, Ms. Brown?
Uh, yes, I got that, yes, I have that already.
Okay, next, next item, uh, what type of sales tax expenditure oversight should be included? Uh, such as a council committee, council appointed committee, annual sales tax report, annual town hall meeting? Any, any combination of the above or all of the above, or any other suggestions? Uh, start with, uh, uh, Mr. Vodden, Mr. Vodden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I think city, uh, council and public involvement in reviewing the spending is a credible, practical, will actually get done methodology of determining or identifying and or tracking, if you will, the way this money is spent. And as Forrest says, we do have a, a higher level of responsibility to document through transparency the reality that we use the money for the right stuff, and right is a subjective term, but for the city, for the, for the, for the services and for the people. And, uh, so I, I would propose and support a combined, combined city council member and or members and or city persons who are interested in, in doing the work and looking at the numbers and, and being the, uh, the guardians of our new funding to make the city healthy and better for all.
Okay, thank, thank you, David.
Welcome.
Mr. Hudson?
Um, I really like the idea of a month reporting, I also like the idea of, um, monthly town hall meetings placed, put in place a couple days after the month report is put out. Give people a chance to chew on it, when they come in, they can have questions ready for the council members. Give us directions or feedback, both positive and negative, as to what their thoughts are and where they're at with our spending. The truth of the matter is, is during the time of us having this tax, the folks sitting at this table will probably change, the folks sitting in the chairs at that table down there will probably change, and the folks sitting at the, in the orange chairs, the citizens will also change. So I think trying to develop a plan that will suit the future would be, um, the monthly reporting and also a monthly town hall meeting, where we're able to just have an open dialogue, um, in getting feedback from the citizens that it's affecting.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Hudson, so, uh, month, just to clarify, monthly or annual town hall?
I think, I think monthly at least is to get us started, um, because let's be honest, the councils before have had a very strong distrust towards them and I want to get that buyback from our citizens. And I think that that's going to be the, the best way to get it. And to show that we're being open about what we're, what we're doing. I know it might be a lot of work and things like that, but, um, I, I think any good, any good idea is going to take a lot of work to get it off the ground. So that's my two cents.
May I make a comment about that?
Ms. Brown?
So if you think about how sales tax comes in and how it's spent, it's typically spent as part of, you know, for the most part, as part of your budget process and then reevaluated and things are moved around during your mid-year budget, which we just did. Those are the two most important times of the year to be looking at the sales tax and having a committee look at it. Monthly, I mean, the only thing you'd really be doing is looking at a trial balance and tracking, are we spending each line item? And, and maybe that's a different kind of committee than what we said and how are we tracking for the year? If we said we're just going to spend a hundred thousand dollars in recreation and it's month six, are we at fifty thousand? Or are, are we spending fifty percent of that budget that's been allocated and approved by the council, or have we spent thirty percent? Um, you know, that's kind of the only conversation you'd be having in a monthly meeting because you've pretty much allocated the whole bu, you know, the whole sales tax for the budget year. Um, so I, I'm not sure it'll be particularly revealing to have a monthly meeting because of the way that we approve the budget process, I think if I was going to make a, a more explicit recommendation than I did here, I know I left it pretty open ended, I'd suggest that you do annual reports, twice yearly meetings at the mid-year and at the bud, before the budget and before the mid-year with a committee and an annual report that you print up and you put out, possibly a town hall meeting once a year. Those would be like, I think, the three best options if you want to do all of that, just because of the way, and, and I actually, sorry, I almost forgot, I would recommend that the council, whoever's sitting on the dais, budget the one and a half percent separate from the rest of the budget, so you very clearly have almost two presentations. Here's our regular seven and a quarter percent and here's what, how we want to supplement that with the one point five percent. So it's very explicit on how it's spent. Um, I'm not sure if Orland does that, but Vallejo did that for years, they had an expiration date for ten years, for the first ten years, they did that. So that the, every year in the spring, when you're having those budget presentations with the public at a council meeting, you're seeing almost two separate presentations. That would be another thing you might want to consider.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown, thank you.
Okay, that's the best I can say, like, I'm.
Good answer.
I'm still, I'm still learning, um. My thing is, is I don't necessarily think we need another committee. Technically, we are the committee for the citizens, right, we're citizens ourselves are voted on, well, appointed or voted on by the citizens, we are the citizens committee, that's what our job's supposed to be. So I do believe that the town hall meeting would be the point where the citizens come in and say, hey, that we're going to talk about this specific item, we want to have open dialogue on it. And so I do feel like that is very important, however, I think creating another five person committee is essentially creating another city council just to go over the sales tax measure itself. I don't know if that'd be necessarily necessary, um, if they're going to trust us, then they're going to trust us, if not, then they need to replace us.
So what about a couple of town hall meetings, one just before the mid-year budget and one just before the budget? Where, you know, the, the, the committee then looks at everything and says. says, oh, this is what we've spent and it looks like it tracks with what you approved last fiscal year and.
Yes, cuz I, I do feel like we need to get public input and say, hey, you know, I see you guys have all this money set aside over here for, you know, project X, but we don't really care about project X. We actually want to see it spent on project, you know, T. You know, that's, that's good input to have. I think that's where we need to get at with majority of the people. But I think just create another five-person committee isn't gonna, I think that's not gonna be the best way to get the whole. I think I can get those people that are actually gonna vote on that committee to show up to that biannual meeting and have this room filled with twenty or thirty people is gonna be better than having, like I said, five people that are, I'm trying to get a bigger, a bigger group to bring in their, their portions, so.
The, the, the sales tax receipts, I mean, I just wanted to clarify that. Sales tax receipts are.
Yeah. And so can I ask a quick question on that? When you go through and you guys are spending the money, would a monthly, so the monthly reporting, would that be hard to do then?
Not with our new system, it would have been harder with, hard with moms, but not with Tyler.
Well, so, okay.
And what do you want to see in the reporting now?
I'm just curious, hey, this is what we've spent this month on, and this is what came out of our sales tax, this is what it went towards on a, on a monthly basis. Like I said, at least the first couple of years, it, it shows that we're using that money hopefully for good. And if not, then it's, you know, then people are bringing feedback to us and we can bring it up during these sort of open session meetings and things like that.
Well, you're, you're reminding me that we're not there yet because of some obvious set setbacks we had in the finance department, but the plan is actually for all of the council to download Tyler and have the ability, not to change numbers, but to run a variety of different reports that you would be trained on and you get to look directly at what's there, you know, you get to just observe or look at a report. You don't get to go in and change the numbers or anything, of course, but that, we're just not, that we just haven't gotten to that place here, but that is the goal. And so at some point, I'll be coming back to all of you to say, so what kinds of reports would you like to be able to run? So we can figure that out and then, you know, tailor it to what the council would like to be and run. So hopefully that'll make it even more transparent, cuz then you can share that report with people if you want to or ask us to do it or.
Yeah. And that's why, that's all I'm saying is, you know, hey, if it's that easy to run, say, hey, this is our separate budget for our sales tax if it gets passed. And by the way, here's what we did, you know, end of January, end of February, and just have it posted out there. I think that that'd be really beneficial. I think that that would be really, yeah, helpful for everyone to kind of see something like that. So that's where I'm at with, I'd still like the month reporting and I think a biannual town hall meeting. I think annual's too far and few in between, but biannual, especially if we're doing our mid-year budget, that'd be a great time to have one of those as well.
Okay.
And I'm done.
Anything further? No? Okay. Mr. Sprague, question is what type of sales tax expenditure oversight would you recommend?
Well, I agree that I would not want to defer the responsibility nor the accountability to another five-member committee, such as we do with the planning commission and so on. I think that they, as Evan pointed out, the elected appointed officials have the responsibility and should then be held accountable for how they do get it spent. I agree specifically with having at least a two, two years as we're going through the mid-year budget as well as the final budget to have a town hall meeting to get the perspective of the people. I do like city manager's idea of being able to track the percentage of the sales tax, local sales tax, whether it's one percent or two percent or whatever, to track that separately. It gives us a little bit more discretion on how that money gets spent and that should be after input from the, from, from the public in my perspective. So that would be my suggestion, not to have an oversight committee, but to be able to get input. And again, to have at least a, a two-year or what it sounds like a quarterly report that we would be able to get as opposed to the annual report and two-town hall.
Okay, Mr. Sprague, thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Uh, yes, I would, when, when Kevin brought it up, I thought monthly reporting would be really hard with for us to get done, especially if we'd simply get paid sales tax quarterly?
Yeah, so it's, I'm not sure monthly will show you anything.
So it doesn't make sense. It makes more sense that we have a town hall with, in budget preparation and it'd be mid-year adjustment. I like that. I like the concept of putting the money actually in a separate deposit account or, or reference so we know exactly how much came in, so we know where that number is. And of course, then this, we'd say, all right, three percent of that goes to parks and rec and five percent go to fire department and eight percent go to the police department or law enforcement contract. We could then allocate that way fairly straight forward so the staff and the people and the council would all know where it goes. So town hall, to get their input and having the money tracked separately, I think is the only way to go. And I don't think, my comment about the standing oversight committee, all they could do is make reference and suggestions, but the reference and the liability and the responsibility of dispersing that money rest with this five bodies, so I don't know if the oversight committee would end up getting frustrated for not getting what they wanted because the council knows what we need to do, so.
I think under state law, I don't think you can transfer that over. You have a judiciary legal responsibility.
I don't think we can do that, so.
Yeah.
So the town hall meetings and having it separately so we can identify where it all goes, that, that would be clear and concise. And then whether we get to the next point where we actually say, this is how much we will use this, it's gonna be really hard when we're so far upside down.
Don't do it.
So you're, you're, you mean in, in terms of during the budget season to literally budget separately? That would be.
No, not budget, but, but we would say, okay, we received one point four million dollars in sales tax from this. And out of this one point four, we're allocating this much.
Not allocating, spending.
Spending this much in these areas so everybody sees.
You want to do that or you don't?
I think we do.
Yeah, okay. Oh, well, so, looks like there's differing of opinions on the ballot. So I'll let you guys duke that out.
That's what we're here for.
Mr. Vodden, did you?
Well, I, I, I've listened with great interest in all the responses. I believe transparency is what the citizens should have. However we give them transparency, the better and the more we'll be, we'll be successful. I shall not ever abdicate the responsibility for determining how the money that we get is spent. If you get a hundred people involved in that process, it will fail. I believe in a principle called KISS, keep it simple, stupid. The more government complicates, convolutes and screws everything up, the less gets done. So let's keep it simple, plain, transparent, honest and straightforward and not create some sort of a thing that fails in the third month because the people that signed up or didn't really want to do it anyway. So let's keep it simple and straight and transparent and honest and, and that's my idea of oversight.
So I'm gonna, when, when you all come to a conclusion about what you want, I'm gonna let the mayor summarize for me so I make sure I got mine correctly.
I'm taking notes.
So is that no reporting then?
What?
Was that no reporting?
No, you know, I, I think the town hall's meeting for input. I think transparency is by the methodologies that you discussed, as long as they're simple. I don't want to tie staff up for a week preparing for a explanation of how we spent the one point five percent additional sales tax. I want it to be simple.
Yeah.
I mean, it shouldn't have to be another job assignment or an employee hired. It shouldn't be that necessary. We can do this.
Can I get a quick question or question answered?
Certainly.
To run a report like that on the new system, how long does that take you? Is it an hour, two hours, ten minutes, once you get it set up?
Joanne, is that about five minutes or less?
Okay. So once you get that set up, it can be a, a five-minute.
Click of a button.
Click of a button thing? Okay.
It's not difficult at all. Didn't used to be, but it is now.
It is now, okay.
And thank you all for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, yeah, the old system was antique, yeah, very laborious, very, very laborious.
It was.
Yes, very laborious. But in its day, I mean, it was, you know.
It's A D R.
That's right.
In the seventies.
It was.
It's from the seventies.
Yes, yes. Almost. Okay, I do agree with the, almost, you know, much of what I've, almost everything I've heard. We're definitely, the majority of the council is definitely on the same page here. I do, I do agree with the biannual town hall meeting proposal around the mid-year budget and, and budget preparation time. I think that's a, that's, that's a must-do. The separate line item, I'm absolutely in favor of a separate line item encompassing the funds received from the increased one point five percent revenue standing.
May I just clarify? You mean in, in the budget or?
In the budget, separate line item identifying, identifying the total. Yes.
Maybe even a separate chapter. Marysville has a separate chapter in its budget called Measure C and it writes all about it, how much it brought in and it's how it was spent. It's a whole chapter in the budget.
I'd, I'd be in favor of that, especially with their, with our new system. It, it would be, once you create that, once you create that document, it would be, you know, fairly easy to manage, right? Joanne? Okay, Marty? Okay, thank you. I'd be in favor of that definitely. And that would satisfy, you know, any, any, you know, also that would satisfy any individual council inquiries as well, you know, or public inquiries to, to council members if need The, you know, initially, in our previous discussion, on the, on the failed, or failed tax measure discussion, you know, we were, were not able to move forward, but I was definitely in favor of the sales tax oversight board, but I, I would, you know, in my mind, that's a citizen advisory committee because it's just an advisory panel, that's all it, I mean. As everyone has said, the responsibility lies with the city council members. It's our responsibility to come to the final conclusion with, with our budget and with the expenditures and, you know, to move the city forward in, in, in our hearts, in our head, based on, based on facts and needs and wants in the right direction, following the law, correct? And that would never change. But I am still in favor of the citizen advisory committee, a five-member advisory committee. And, and, you know, David, you mentioned transparency. I, I think that would only, only increase transparency with each council member getting, having one appointee, one appointee, and that that appointee be a resident of the city of Willow's, not nine five nine eight eight zip code, which are, which the, which the former, had this discussion with, with the city, city attorney at a previous meeting several months ago. The, that, that document, attachment number three on page five of that document, which is page forty-eight total, that sales tax oversight board language consisted that each city, that the, the city Willow's will appoint a five-member standing oversight committee to be made up of Willow's residents, not city employees to serve up to three, two-year terms, okay? And each city council member will appoint one of the five members of the oversight board. So each member appoints one citizen of the city Willow's who serves for up to three, two-year I, I requested that that language at that time be changed to not, not the Willow's, you know, changed from a Willow's resident, in other words, not a nine five nine eight eight zip code address to a city of Willow's, if we move forward with that, a city Willow's resident. This is a city of Willow's tax measure. This is not a Southland County nine five nine eight eight zip code tax measure. It's, as we all know, the nine five nine eight eight zip code extends from roughly Cantor Road thirty-nine south of the county line and east to approximately Cantor Road B Victor and west as well. So I, I would, if we went with an advisory committee and instead of a term of sales tax oversight board, if it's possible, I, I requested it be called as that, a citizen advisory, citizen advisory committee. And that does allow for, for additional public input in addition to the two biannual. I'd like to see what my colleagues thought about that. You know, I'm, if, if I'm in the minority on that, that's fine, but I just, you know, I, I just think it'd be a good idea that it's advisory committee to the city council. Okay, that's, that's what it is. Then the city council ultimately makes, makes the final decision. It's, it's not a decision-making body, particularly advisory committee.
Is this in addition to the two town hall meetings?
Yes, in addition to the two town, the two, the biannual meetings, yes. That'd be my, that'd be my request.
How often would the advisory committee meet?
As often as they need. I like the KISS method, the Dave and Sue, that's what I try to live by and work by and not, not overcomplicate it. I just, I, I just think it'd be another option for, for, you know, to ensure, you know, our promise of the public that this money will be utilized wisely and appropriately, not going to be wasted. Period. This would be essential city for services.
May I respond to that idea, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sprague.
I do think that that would in fact complicate the process and get a bit, it would get away from the idea of KISS, keeping it simple, stupid. And I also would be concerned that it would cause conflict if the council decided to do something different than the advisory committee suggested. And so now you've got contention between a group of, a small group of the public as opposed to a general consensus from more people from the general public giving us their input and then us making a decision. I think the concept of having a, a council-appointed committee is, is just asking for conflict and, and more problems than what you expect.
I appreciate that, Mr. Sprague. Yeah, I'm not, obviously, I'm not, I'm not looking for conflict. I'm trying to, I'm trying to ensure, ensure to our citizens that there will be, you know, it's a citizen's tax money and, and citizens will always say in the way it's meant, that's, that's all I'm, all I'm trying to do here. I do appreciate your comments. Anything further? But that, what are your thoughts on an oversight committee? It sounds like the, the council majority consensus is not in favor of an oversight, of a advisory committee at this point. Okay.
I am not.
Okay.
Me neither.
I'm not, I, to me, it's if I'm gonna appoint somebody, then I'm appointing somebody to speak for me and I don't want somebody else speaking for me, I can speak on for myself and that's, that's kind of my two cents on the matter is, is if it's gonna be somebody appointed by one of us, then I don't, I don't see a need for it.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna pick somebody that's like-minded like me, you know, and one of my friends and I'm gonna, or somebody that I think should be on there, then they're probably gonna be thinking the same way that I am. And if the people don't like that, then that's gonna reflect on me anyways, or if they go off the rails against what I was hoping for and want to spend it on other things or, you know, push it a different way, then that's gonna reflect on me as well. I'd rather have my own foot, foot in my mouth than have somebody else's foot put there because I chose them as my representative, so I'm gonna say no to that.
Good way to put it. Okay, very good. Majority consensus of the council is no oversight committee. I can, I understand, I agree with your comments. I lost that one. I can see, I can see defeat. It's okay. Okay, very good. Okay.
Did we all agree on month reporting then?
So what I, I got was two town hall meetings to coincide with the mid-year budget and budget, a separate sales tax section in the budget. I think budgeting separately during the actual budget process, budgeting as a separate budget or no?
No, I wasn't looking for a separate budget. I was just looking for a way to identify where we targeted the money.
In the budget, right?
The way you said Vacaville did it or wherever you.
Marysville.
At Marysville, that was a really good example and they've done it and it must have worked. Did it work?
Yes, it's very helpful.
Done.
We, we do a section in the budget and, well, the city did, when I was there, they also did annual reporting.
Very good. I think that's what Rick wants.
What I was looking for.
You want a separate annual standalone report as well?
No.
Okay, just in the budget.
If, if we took in this amount of money, this, this, they want to know where we spent it.
Right.
And that's really what I was driving.
Got it, okay. Although I have two things then. Is that right? The town hall meetings and the separate reporting in the budget?
Yes.
Monthly reporting.
Yeah, but.
Already went quarterly.
So monthly reporting to the council.
We just added as a council agenda, I had a consent calendar with, we've just pushed a button on, this is how much, you, when you say monthly reporting, what we're generating?
That's put right up there on the website.
And it's, it's what we're generating or it's how we're spending it or it's both or?
Boy, I have to be the hard question.
Because we'll see, the thing, I mean, the other thing is, is that it, the sales tax comes in quarterly, it doesn't, so I mean, there'll be months when there's not much of a change in terms of what's coming. It's like, well, the same thing came in as the previous month because it comes in quarterly, so.
So I think a quarterly report to where this is what was brought in at the beginning of the quarter, at the end of the quarter, this is where it was spent. And I think something like that put on the city's website to where.
In your consent calendar, probably.
And, yeah, some in our consent calendars as well, but something that's put on the, And, uh, yeah, some in our consent calendars as well, but something that's put on the, on the website to where, you know, anybody that lives here has access to a computer, they have access to a library, they can pull it up. You know, and I think that's the best way to get it out there. Show where the money's being spent, how it's helping the community.
Okay, is that amenable to everyone then?
Yeah, it's just for clarity, if you budgeted five hundred thousand dollars for police, I'm gonna be strapping the name of the number, and we figured three hundred thousand of that's coming from general fund normal and then two hundred thousand comes from the fine, from the increased sales tax, then that, we could simply say that there's forty percent coming from there. We received this much, that's much, and it would be real simple to allocate, I would think. That's what I was kinda looking for.
Well, I was thinking, I was gonna ask Joanne if, um, if, because I've seen this before where you end up, because you're budgeting separately and you're trying to be transparent, you show that fractionally we're funding half of a firefighter with measure blah-bitty blah.
Yeah, that's not gonna work, is it?
Nope.
Uh, well, I could tell you, it's, it's challenging. I'm not saying it's impossible, but people might find it confusing, like, wait, how do we budget for, how are we funding half a firefighter?
Keep it simple.
Keep it simple.
Right.
So.
So what would that simple look like?
You already described it. Why are you asking guys?
Reporting on the revenue and expense.
I'd like to say what you have proposed with what's been done in the past is great and after a year goes by, we don't like it, we'll pay, we don't like it.
Okay, but this-
Purposes of clarity, uh, Marty, the sales tax revenue is general fund money. It's basically taking the general fund and saying, there's all of it and there's the one point five and there's the total bottom line. So it's, it is general fund money. Okay, just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
Absolutely correct.
That's a simpler way to say it.
That's right. This, so just to be aware, in the last, um, language that we drafted back in October, November timeframe, this was actually in the ordinance that would be voted on. But what's the oversight? So that's why I'm, you know, really kind of, um, trying to make sure we're, we're all on the same page before I bring back ordinance language that, because this is gonna be in there. We're gonna be telling the voters, we're gonna have two, um, you know, twice a year town hall meetings, you know, at the beginning of the budget cycle and halfway through the budget cycle, we're gonna do a separate section in the budget that covers this and talks about explicitly the special sales tax, what we're raising, how we're proposing to spend it, so it's very clear. And that's as far as I got. And then we're gonna say, we're gonna do quarterly reports as well, that will be on the city's website and also go to the council for review and approval.
Perfect. And as, when I'm talking reports, I'm saying, hey, Parks and Rec, this much of that money went to them. This is how much they spent. Is that what we're discussing?
Yeah, but that's gonna be overkill.
That's gonna be, I'm not saying Parks and Rec hired five-
Nope.
Five lifeguards and this is how much it went to that specific-
I think what we could do is we could say, here's the Parks and Rec division's budget, correct me if I'm wrong, and of this budget, forty percent was paid for with measure blah-bitty blah. Would that suffice?
That's what I was looking at.
We can do that.
Essentially, a simple bar graph saying, here's the, here's the black line was the money that we get from our base limit and then here's the blue section that the sales tax has allowed us to put into that department.
But I'm not gonna tell you that we bought a half a basketball with measure.
No, I don't wanna know that.
That level of detail. I was looking for percentage.
Got it, okay. We can do that.
I don't wanna know that you bought a compressor needle and we paid for three tenths of that.
So that's a quarterly report showing the revenue that's been generated and the percentages were, that were spent in each department?
Yes.
Okay, good. Got it.
We certainly don't, you know, wanna, wanna waste, uh, that time or money.
I think that's fairly easy to do, don't you? Yeah, so that's an easy report.
I want the two-minute report, not the, not the two-hour one.
Sure, absolutely.
Cause remember, I want it open to everybody, so it, it needs to be easy to digest.
Right.
You know, you start reading the pamphlet you don't like, you're done after the first page. You start to lose people after that, so.
Marty, I'll let you, uh, so Marty, what do you have so far?
Okay, so I have, uh, so under this section, uh, two town hall meetings, uh, per year, one that would be before the mid-year budget and one that would be for approval of the following year's budget. So one in like February and one again in either April or May. And then quarterly reporting that would go on the website and also it would come to the council on, on agenda that reports sales tax revenue for that previous quarter as well as the percentage that was expended in each department of the new sales.
Okay. The consensus of the council?
Yep.
Agree with that? Come on, Ray. Very good, you have full consensus. Marty?
Got it.
So far?
Yep, that's it. That's it for that item, right?
That, is that, anything further on that item, gentlemen? Okay, move on to the next question. To the extent that is, that it is legally possible, does the city council wish to set a public policy stating how the sales tax will be spent such as, uh, council's intent? If so, what, what city services and functional elements would that include? Such as public safety, public works, new equipment and apparatus? And what would the policy look like?
And that was why I threw in the survey as an attachment so that you want language that says we're gonna spend our money on public safety potholes and the three keys, can we come up with third key or something?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vaughn.
Uh, city manager Marty, you indicated to us, we have, be careful here because there's a thing called a specific uh, sales tax program. And, and all I wanna say is that this money goes into the general fund, that we have already agreed by consensus to identify the one point five additional amount and share with the people of the world how that was spent. We've agreed to take input, which we do anyway, from citizens who wanna ask or suggest how we should spend it. I think any, any effort to say upfront that we're going to spend it in a percentage on divided up, police, fire, et cetera, is just asking for trouble. Is it, what if it doesn't come out that way? It's not a commitment, it's more like a statement. So I just think it's overcomplicating it. I mean, the city is a business, it's got expenses. We're gonna be transparent in how we spend this special money, but I don't wanna, Alex, say that we're going to spend so much of it. Here's the best one. The Lotto is for the schools. Remember that? We're gonna give all the lottery money to the schools.
Yes, I remember that.
Yeah, whoop-de-doo. So let's just not do this. Let's just call it a business and, and we are, we're responsible for the money and we'll be transparent and we'll share, we'll investigate, we'll look and we'll ask questions. Anybody could ask a question about this any day of the week, uh, if they come to the office, so.
I only added it because some of you showed an interest last time.
I thank you for taking it out now.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's see how the other, your four colleagues feel about it. Cause you rule together.
David, very good. Make me laugh. Mr. Thomas?
Well, I would agree with David on that. Um, I think probably one of the most important things, if we were to say anything at all, would be that, that we will use, um, the sales tax to reestablish a re- a sufficient and adequate reserve to protect the future of the citizens of Willow's for the services that they receive. And whether that be a seventeen percent or twenty percent reserve, um, I think is critical mass, so we don't end up like, you know. So I think if I were to add anything, I would add simply that we would reestablish a sufficient reserve for the continuance of the services of the city of Willow's, of its citizens.
Very good, Rick, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Sprague?
Um, believe it or not, that's not something that I considered, Rick pointed out, but I, I tend to agree with that concept because I'm concerned that if we just throw it into the general fund, the public is gonna look at this and say, okay, now we can expect salary increases, we can do this, that, and the other thing. The city manager has already given us a laundry list of items to, to look at for how to spend the money if we in fact get the sales tax. Uh, I was gonna suggest that we do in fact specifically earmark it, um, albeit it's a policy, it's not something that we can specifically insist upon. But my reading of the survey, albeit there's a lot of people that complain about the potholes of the sidewalks and the parks, et cetera, et cetera. There's, there seems to be grant money available to us from time to time for street improvements, sidewalks, parks and that type of thing. What seems to be a little bit more difficult to obtain is in fact law enforcement and fire protection fund. So I, I would suggest that, uh, now I would have to ponder what Mr. Thomas presented a little bit more, but I would suggest we do at least establish a policy that would be first spent on public safety, fire protection, and the idea that we do in fact have to deal with our ambulance issue that, uh, is facing the city as well. So I would, the point is, I would be in favor in at least establishing a policy of where we would like to see that money be spent first. If, again, not advocating for the sales tax, I'm just saying, if we get it, then I would agree that we have a policy statement about how it gets spent.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
There's a lot of ways to go with this. Um, yes, I think first and foremost, the city needs to first get into the black, right? We're in the red. Um, get us into the black. Get us to where, um, we're not bleeding money, we're whole. Get our reserves up so that if we do need them, they're there, they're, they're refilled to pay for that emergency, whatever we have. We had the HVAC system go out, okay? Let's pay for those emergencies. That's, that was a small one. We can have bigger ones than that, right? Um, make sure we get those built up. Obviously, public safety is gonna be my number one issue. You know, I have, I have public safety and recreation written down. Obviously, we have a lot of public works that need to be done. I know that, um, there's a lot of questions on the green street section. Um, I know that there's quite a few streets in this town that could use a little bit of TLC, um, kind of love and care to get, to get back up to where they need to be. Um, I know we have a lot of equipment. I would say one thing that I would wanna see, um, implemented, um, as this money is being allocated is, um, a depreciation schedule for equipment that we have. I, I don't, I haven't seen one when I look through any sort of budgets. I don't see where we're saying, hey, we bought a brand new, um, we just got a brand new backhoe for public works. We expect that one to last us thirty years, so we're setting aside a portion of what one of those is gonna cost. So then when it's time to replace that backhoe, we're not in oh no, what do we do mode and paying thousands of dollars to a contractor to rent a backhoe or this or that. We actually have, right now we have that nest egg built up to buy that piece of equipment and supply our city. Same with fire. I think that there needs to be a, um, budget set up saying, hey, our ladder truck is gonna be out of service here and I'm throwing a number, ten years, okay? When we replace that ladder truck, okay, it's gonna last us twenty-five years, okay? So a new ladder truck, we have twenty-five years of use out of that. Great, now we're gonna set aside money for the next twenty-five years, so when we have to replace that ladder truck, that those funds are already there. We're not hitting the, oh no, what are we gonna do and running out of a almost forty-year-old engine to, um, serve our public. That's not, that's not doing them any justice, that's doing them a disjustice. Um, same with Parks and Rec. We have a huge grant that we're gonna spend all this money and put in this great new facility and all this new lighting. Okay, do we have a long-term plan to take care of that project in the future when there's problems? When the tennis courts get huge cracks in it and they need to be retrofitted, we don't have any sort of a depreciation buildup to fix those problems. I think that that'd be first and foremost, to make sure that we are planning for our future, um, taking care of what we need to take care of right now, being fiscally smart and planning for our future, um, by implementing some sort of plan like that with the extra funds that we have left over. And then slowly expanding, you know, the, the needs that we have, whether it be Parks and Rec, you know, to get a new hire or a new, a new street sweeper, whatever it is, expand those as we need. Um, you know, build a new park if that's what we need on the north end of town, because we don't have one north of Wood Street, um, on that side of town. There's no, there's no park over there for the citizens, for the kids over there.
Right.
You had the school, um, which now they're so fenced off, can't get in there. When I was a kid, Murdoch was the playground that you had on that side of town. Now you can hardly get in there, um, you know. Still provide those services, slowly grow those services, build up our rec department, um, but we gotta plan for our futures. We gotta, we gotta implement some plans to make sure that we're here for the, the long-term. Um, and just start setting aside some of that money because we're gonna have a day where something's gonna go wrong and we're gonna be wondering where we're getting the money from. And I don't wanna be stealing it from a different department. I don't wanna, you know, say, well, sorry, rec department, you're not gonna, we gotta get rid of your lifeguards this year so that we can, um, replace a public works vehicle that went out. I wanna make sure that we have the money set aside in each of those areas to save it for a rainy day. I'm a strong believer in Murphy's Law and that, um, if you're not prepared for it, it will bite you hard. So that's my two cents.
Point of information, Evan, if I may.
Yeah, Mr. Vaughn.
I don't believe governments take depreciation because depreciation is not a funding of future investments, it's a write-off technique against income. So I don't believe you take depreciation, do you?
We, it, it, well, we, um, our insurance and risk management expect us to track it and I can tell you when I got here, there were things on the risk management list that didn't exist anymore.
But what Evan's talking about is, we, we do this at Thunder Hill, we set money aside for future. It's not called depreciation.
You're correct, I understand. In the business world, yeah, so you, you, you're setting aside, you're depreciating an item and you get to write it off on the business side. I would like to see something like that within the city though, where, hey, we have this nest egg set up for each of these departments for when they have-
We just call it something different. We don't call it a depreciation fund. It's sort of like a-
It'd be a capital improvement.
It's a capital improvement reserve or it's a fire apparatus reserve or, you know.
You get a new roof, it's a twenty-five-year life, you take that much money per year, put it aside, adjust for inflation, and then you got your new roof at the end of it at twenty.
You have to have the money to begin with though.
This is correct and that's actually a little bit of my concern with that statement.
You know, if our, if our roof on this building came down today, we would have no means to, to fix that with a, a plan like Evan's talking about, a CIP program uh, for equipment, infrastructure and other things. You're putting that money aside because you know that it's got a twenty-five-year life on it.
Exactly, that's my point. And we don't, I, we don't do that, do we?
No.
Do we have anything like that?
No, we have not had the ability to do that at all.
So this roof right here that's over us, that we don't have a plan to fix it other than?
When it falls down, we'll do something and find money for it.
We do with the solar panel.
Yeah, the solar likely for that.
I know, but I'm saying though, that's, that was our fix. Or our fix is a grant. Um, grant money's not guaranteed, right?
You, the, the city has operated in such a way that it, it's a, it's putting out a fire. It's a crisis for everything that, you know, there's so much deferred maintenance. There has been no reserve fund for any of these things. And I just wanna take the opportunity to remind the council that the current, you know, projected structural deficit of one point four, roughly two-thirds of that comes from the increase in law enforcement services contract and one-third of it actually just is spread across the entire organization. There, I mean, I could literally list off positions that are filled now that are technically part of that, that deficit, but we're at minimum staffing with eighteen, nineteen FTEs, so there's no room to cut. That other third of the structural deficit is a person in the finance department, a person in the community development department, three maintenance workers and portions of the city clerk position. So when we talk about it and people think about like, let's just talk about public safety. Well, actually, you can't because the deficit is so great in the city, it impacts every single department and division.
Right. And I don't want us to always be putting out fires. I want us to be a city that other cities look at for our financial responsibility, um, and be the one that they look at and be like, we wanna do it how Willow's is doing it. We wanna make sure that we're being smart with our money so that when there's a problem, we can take care of it.
I would like to say that the deficit the city is facing is not due to expenses, it's due to lack of revenue.
Well-
Work on the revenue side. That's what we have failed.
Correct, that's a better way, because the revenue has been stagnant for some.
You know, I, you know, my approach would be a hybrid to all, of, all the comments. I agree with almost all the comments I've heard. This, this, uh, will be a general use sales tax measure. But, uh, in order to adequately fund, uh, our core city services and remain a, a full-service city, especially since we're considering, uh, possibly I actively considering, uh, moving toward, uh, you know, establishing a, a police department again, which is extremely expensive. To, to keep in line with the general use sales tax measure, obviously, and, and like what Evan said, you know, your core basic services, do we have a duty, a duty to provide public safety, police, fire, right? I also link very closely to that, uh, public works, all right, for the, for the health and safety side, the public infrastructure side, all under the public works umbrella. But also additionally, all city services in my mind are core city services that we have in, in our city here. Law enforcement, fire, public works, recreation, building, planning, it, it all comes together. In our, in our, you know, in our seventeen, eighteen, full-time employee equivalent skeleton crew staff that gets, gets the work done each and every day and, and does it well. Uh, agree with what David said, this, this, we have never had a spending problem. We have a revenue problem and we're trying to address that tonight. You know, with, with additional funds coming. So I liked what, what, what Rick said about the, the, the general language, okay? Okay, I also like what David said. I like what what Evan said. I like what Forrest said. I I'd agree toward a hybrid verbiage with adequate language encompassing the full service city or city services. We we know what we need. We need a lot. Every every department in this city needs things. Okay, Evan said ongoing maintenance. Obviously, that's an issue, too. Which, you know, will never go away. Marty, I appreciate what you said about cutting cutting staff. We've been there. We've been down that road. In the past, we've been down that road more than one time. We were we were running around with the, okay, we'll we'll take I'll 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 take Chief Monk with a with a worn out fire engine. And we keep running out of water. We've been putting fires out for years around here because we've had we've had a funding issue. We're well beyond, we cannot continue doing business that way. It's it's not going to work. It will fail. It is failing. It will fail. So that's my that's my suggestion for for the appropriate the appropriate language and verbiage for general use sales tax measure to adequately fund all all for city services to remain a full service city. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. And so what I'm hearing is a a statement about reserves and a statement about for city services that include public safety, public works or law enforcement, fire, if we want to be explicit, public works, recreation, library.
All of it.
Yes.
We want it to be a general. It's a that's why it's a general fund.
Right. So if there's any
There's necessarily a policy intent. I think that when it comes to the marketing side, I think this list that you put up on our desk on our on the diocese, almost a desks, same thing, I guess, is a great idea, kind of a great way to do how Orland met with their measuring out there, ladder truck. However, you look at their ladder truck compared to the numbers on your ladder truck, they've inflated greatly. You know, it's their ladder truck says eight hundred and ninety thousand on it. For years, we're pushing almost to two million dollars now. That's when inflation is done. And we do not have any more revenue sources. That's why we need the sales tax measure, right? To keep up with the inflation. We're not keeping up with it. We haven't kept up with it for years. So now we're asking for a larger amount to try and catch up and keep up. But I think overall, it's going to be a general use. We're going to spend it where it needs to be spent first. That's what we're doing here. We want the needs taken care of so then we can reach out for the wants. What do we want? We want shiny parks. We want beautiful streets. What are our needs? We need roads that are drivable. We need first responders and vehicles that are able to do the jobs that they're supposed to be doing.
Absolutely, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, in case you heard me giggle about your verbiage of hybrid, I was not giggling at what you said. I'm giggling at what I was thinking because that was exactly the word that I was going to use to come to conclusion here of what gets done is a hybrid between what Mr. Thompson Thomas recommended. It's taking care of the deficit and or the reserve first and then going to a few specifics such as public safety and so on. I'm cautious to suggest that it we present it as a assuming again, you're the city is successful in getting the sales back. I'm cautious to suggest that we talk about it just going into the general fund. That is not going to be good sales. If we identify specifically the idea of getting adequate reserve and then it's it is a policy statement at least to identify police, public safety, ambulance, fire, etc.
Thank you, Mr. President.
If you lump sum those into, as you pointed out, essential services, I don't have a problem with that. But the whole idea that it can be spent on whatever staff decides if they want to spend from, I'm cautious for that.
It's always your decision, not ours.
Yeah, I appreciate that. No, no offense taken, and I didn't hear you giggle.
I was far enough away from it. But it was not intended to be insulting to you.
Thank you. No, appreciate that. No, no, no worries. No worries. Thank you.
So I I think that to the extent that it's possible and and the city attorney, you know, to make sure we don't jeopardize this being a general sales tax, I think I have enough information from all of you for us to come back with some language that would be part of some sort of policy statement. I don't know that would actually go in the in the ordinance language. I have a feeling Carolyn might not, you know, want that, would want a separate policy statement. But I feel like I have enough information unless there's something more you'd like to add.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And Mr. Vaughn, oh, did you?
I just wanted to thank Marty for ending the dialogue.
Before we move on, is there any any public comment in reference to item six eight? This time, Miss Mr. Ross. Evening, Doug.
Doug Ross, I live in Willow's. I I'm usually pretty good at reading the web and I went to the state tax, whatever the name of the put it out to try and understand for myself the distance between a sales tax and a transaction use tax. After analyzing or reading the state website on it, write down the specific questions, what is the difference between a sales tax and a transaction use tax? The net product of my research was that I was still confused. So the state really didn't answer the one question. When you when you authorize a sales tax, are you also authorizing that same amount in lockstep with a transaction use tax? Or is a sales tax measure, a transaction use tax measure? And a combination of those two? Three separate things?
They're separate things. We're not discussing transient transient, the T O T.
You could a a city, a city, a city could put on a sales tax measure, a city could put on a combined sales tax and T U T measure, and a city could put on a T U T only measure.
Their ballot measure, ballot, and we've done before with with our T O T measure.
Right.
Yeah, we're this is just the sale. We're just discussing sales.
Those other options are all. I wasn't able to extract that from the state.
We we have a twelve percent T O T tax that's been in effect here.
T O T, but I meant T U T, right?
You said T O T.
I said T U T.
Transient transient occupancy.
Occupancy tax, also called bed tax.
T U T. But I said T U T. So so what I'm asking is, and perhaps and perhaps I should never have gone to read the state website and got confused.
Transaction use tax is what we're discussing, a sales tax measure.
Are those two terms synonymous is what I'm asking?
As far as I know.
Yeah, sales tax.
There are more than one kinds of sales tax, right? We could use you could use sales tax to be a special sales tax. Sales tax is a generic term. You have to distinguish it by calling it a transaction use tax, which if you look at one attachment, three or four, which had the draft ordinance from last time, I from October, November, it's a transaction use tax is what we're talking about here. So when we talk about sales tax, it's just a generic. It could be there's different types of sales tax. But in this case, the one that the council is looking at is a transaction use.
Yes.
Which is it, which is a kind of sales.
So you're correct, Doug. I was I was wrong. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
This is this is a transition use tax discussion.
I heard Mr. Vaughn last time use the term T U T.
I did?
Transaction and use tax.
I did, huh?
So that's one of the reasons I so it let me articulate what what I think to be what I now understand and see if this is right. In in this coming when it when it gets, you know, articulated or what we call it before it goes onto the ballot, let's say it's one point five percent. Is that automatically both? Is that automatically a sales tax? Generic? And a transit T U T transaction use tax specific together? Is are 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 they combined in the one and a half?
If if successful, the T U T would be an additional one point five percent on top of the seven point two five percent current.
Right, so are you using the term T U T as synonymous with sales tax in this instance?
We're discussing T U T tonight, transition use.
The T U T is going to be a specific part of your sales tax that you'll pay when you buy an item in the city of Willow's. And the T U T is used to identify that as coming directly to the city of Willow's as part of the as a general sales tax. You're you're saying sales tax, right? So that sales tax is charged to you. That goes to many different fingers that it got their hands on. The T U T comes directly to the city of Willow's.
Right.
So that's why we're specifying that and it will be under the frame, the the main heading of a sales tax. But it's its own little sliver down there at the one and a half percent is what we're proposing.
I I understand everything that was just said. If I go out on the street tomorrow and talk to a member of the public of the city, every time it's been referenced to date, it says a sales tax increase of one and a half percent, let's say it comes out for that. In in me articulating to a member of the public that it's a sales tax increase, then by admitting that T U T is a sub component of those revenues, am I an error in in informing the member of the public by omitting to you the the word transaction use tax and just saying sales tax? Or conversely, if I if the person of the public says to me, the city passed a, let's say, two weeks from now, is going to put a sales tax measure on the ballot, is it necessary for me as a journalist or whatever to explain to them that that a T U T is incorporated within that?
Well, that'd be your prerogative, Doug. You're the you're the journalist.
I'm not so sure it would be, but I don't want to make you seem like I'm being rhetoric rhetorical. But I I'm not getting any more illumination out of this conversation between you and me than I am from the state website. And I don't mean that in a pejorative sense.
No, it's it's
I mean
We we can talk offline, Doug. I'd be happy to talk to you offline.
Okay, well, we do talk offline, if you will, or on on when we do, you know, when we do talk online, offline, if you will. I I want to I want to make it clear that I'm as non clear right now as I believe the public is non clear.
Okay, we'll 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 talk.
Okay.
As always.
Great, then then it'll be clear, hopefully. But my my point is, if I put out something as a journalist is non clear, then I'm diserving the public. And and I would say that if the public feels like, you know, they're being diserved, that's a point against their information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll we'll have a conversation. Yeah, absolutely. Any anytime, but thank you very much for your comment. Any other public comment this evening? Anything? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
My name is Sharon Ponciano, and I want to thank you for wrestling with this tonight. I really do appreciate the consideration and various strategies for being transparent with the community. I think that's essential. And I have I've really tried over the years to comprehend what how the money is being spent and what money we have coming into our city. So I I mean, I I come partly as a kind of litmus test to the intelligibility of the information because I think I think I'm not below average intelligence. I have the privilege of a college degree. I and I've I'm interested and I've tried really hard to follow the business of the city. So I think whatever you can do, I'm glad you've I'm glad you've thought carefully about an advisory committee because I I understand the the reason for wanting input, but I also think you have to be careful what you ask for. And and I think to some degree, I've become increasingly confused. And I will admit tonight that I don't even know what a town hall meeting is in this discussion. I I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know if that would be something where you're going to educate the public. And it's more like, I think, what you've called classes or what did you call? You called them something when you've had other educational meetings here for the public. But I I I think people get confused when they hear town hall because they do think they're coming to express themselves and tell you what they want. So I would ask you to consider what you all mean by town hall meetings with regard to the sales tax increase that we are heading in the direction of. And I also one one other thought on my part is that things would be much more understandable to me. I love this idea of specifically showing where the tax increase will be going, but also other ways that the city takes in money, whether it's grants, whether it's rebates, whether it's coming from a sales tax or wherever it's coming from, that the public is informed about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, may city attorney, if she was here, may I help with my Karen on what she brought up?
Yeah, briefly, Mr. Frank.
Yeah. There's a process that started, became somewhat trendy. Maybe you would know city managers better than I do five or ten years ago called public participation budgeting process. One of those ideas includes a a actual committee that makes recommendations. The one that I tend to favor is opening it up to the public when we do the mid year budget as well as we do the annual budget to allow the public to come in and say, hey, I would really like to see, as Evan pointed out, money being being spent on project tax and so on. So I think that's what we're trying to promote is to be able to at least have a town hall meeting or complaint session or whatever you want to call it, where people can come in and say, this is how I would like to see the money spent. And then we can absorb that information and see what what seems to be a consensus of what the public would like to see and how that money gets spent, but leaving the decision still up to at least the majority of them. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Spreg. Yeah, Ms. Ponciano, yeah, the town hall meeting would be just that, as Frank mentioned. It'd be a meeting for public input, all public input. We sit here and we and receive public input. Open town hall forum. You're welcome. Mrs. Edford.
Prefer to ask, Barry, I think the one percent tax would probably pass with little effort. But that's not even worth the time. I think the one and a half minimum is where we need to be. And also not have it sunset at any time because if you say ten years, in ten years, we're already probably back to where we are right now because of increases. So I'd say whatever you decide, just leave it. Also, I know I've I've done a lot of finance in my career. We say reserves. Okay, fine, we all know what reserves are. But you go out and start talking to Joe Blow and saying, we need to build our reserves. He's he hears, you've already got savings and I want to get more money to save. So you're going to have to come up with something else.
Good point.
Yes, very good point.
Anyway, also, I know that the people I have already talked to are afraid that it's going to be salaries and benefits. And they would like assurances that that's not where the tax increase is going to. I'll have to say about that. At some point, though, we're going to need to talk about specifics on the budget, whereas paying spending a hundred thousand will save us several hundred thousand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edford. Good points. Agreed and agree with your comments. Thank you. Any additional public? Any additional public comment on this matter before we move forward? Okay, thank you very much for your, your comments, your input. Council members, uh, any further comments, suggestions, recommendations?
Oh, I'm sure we'll have many more as we move through this process, but not tonight.
Thank you, Rick. Marty, anything further?
No, I don't think so.
You have your consensus?
I do have a consensus and I don't think you need to make a motion.
You have very good, you have consensus of the council. Marty's already, uh, proposed that consent, those, those points to the council. So it is now, uh, eight fourteen PM. Let's take a ten-minute recess at this time. Thank you. Yes. Okay, good, good evening, uh, again, everyone. It's, uh, we're reconvening into, uh, open session from a brief recess. Time is eight twenty-three PM at this time. Item six B, Recreation Division Programs and Activities. Direct staff to hire, uh, uh, discussion of directing staff to hire a contract replacement for the recreation manager position and continue recreational programming as usual, or suspend all recreation programs and activities to achieve cost savings until city revenues improve. In reference to the remaining fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and fiscal year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five budgets. Before I turn it over to Mr. Bentonport, uh, Marty Brown, do you have anything?
Well, actually, I'm going to be presenting on this item, I think.
Okay, very good.
Fine with me. And, and Joe will chime in if necessary. The reason this item is on here tonight, I think that all of the council knows that our recreation manager Christina Hudson has resigned from her position. It is the only position that is a permanent position in the Recreation Division of the city, which is in the Community Development and Services Department. Um, given the city's fiscal situation, uh, we thought that it might be a good time for the council to have the opportunity to consider, uh, suspending recreation activities at this time since we do have a fairly significant structural deficit. Um, and suspending them for the remainder of this fiscal year and next fiscal year since there's not probably going to be a huge change in, um, the deficit until the, you know, when we're, if we're lucky in the fourth quarter of next fiscal year. Um, and this would provide some cost savings and a bit of savings to the reserve, uh, which is estimated to be at about fifty-three thousand by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So, um, we're bringing it back as an opportunity to consider this, um, possibility as it won't in fact, it won't impact any permanent city employees at this time. Um, the cost savings to the city would be approximately thirty thousand for the remainder of this fiscal year and sixty thousand for next fiscal year. And that's the cost of the, um, current part-time recreation manager's salary as well as, um, all the incidentals and associated costs with running a program including part-time lifeguards and the swimming pool program and a few other part-time positions that are, that are seasonal and temporary that are paid for throughout the year when we run other, um, recreational activities as well as, um, equipment. Um, and the cost of running our recreation software that we use, the portal for, um, registration of our recreation activities. That's generally, um, the, at, you know, the estimated rough costs of the savings. So nearly ninety thousand dollars over eighteen months. And as you can see from the staff report, it was requested. This, these are the, the programs that we run at this time are spring soccer, fall soccer, summer soccer, youth basketball, jump start and the summer swim program. There's an average of twenty-four to a hundred and eighty participants in most of those programs with, uh, upward of four, one thousand four hundred and fifty-three in the summer swim program. Although in talking to the recreation manager, at least thirty percent of, um, those who participate in the swim program are, um, repeat attendees, the same person. So, um, the numbers, you know, seems inflated, but it's the same people every day. Cause that's just a total number of participants in a six-day-a-week, seven, six-day-a-week, seven-week swim program. So the same people, many of the same people are coming back day after day. So I just wanted to clarify that that's not one thousand four hundred and fifty-three unique individuals every day coming to the swim program. Um, I think that pretty much completes my presentation unless you have any questions for myself or Joe.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Who would like to begin?
I will.
Mr. Watt.
If we don't do this or if we take the money and run, does that mean all those programs do not happen?
That is correct.
So I absolutely cannot accept that, as you could expect. Uh, Casey Hoffenke was all about recreation and about the kids and the young people and whomever. So I realize we have a financial problem. I propose that we develop with either members of this committee or the council or outside in the community, a fundraising effort that we reach out and try to raise the money like Carol Lemonager did with her hundred-dollar pool days or whatever she did. I realize that's not quite a solution, but it's a, a, an opportunity to subsidize the, the city's continued support of our young people and our citizens. So first I recommend we continue and, and hire the, the person to go on, whether it's a contractor, however you do it. And then I'll commit to try to lead a fundraising effort to offset some of those expenses. I cannot let the kids, you know, just not, just tell them tough luck. I'm, and I'll probably do it on the basis of, we're out here raising money because until we get the sales tax, this is how we're going to have to do business. Can you help us, please? And then I'll have some kid crying next to me with a towel in their hand.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Um, so right now, I know the youth basketball program's already started, but that one's continuing on for now? Or has that been shut down as well?
No, that's correct. If the council, um, elected to suspend recreation for the next eighteen months, this particular activity would finish out and we would complete it through March ninth. And we would suspend, uh, all the other activities, so.
Okay. Um.
Cause it is already underway. You're correct.
So I have to say as a parent and as, um, my kids being involved in a lot of these programs, I would say I'm put in a tough spot. Um, you know, the, the unbiased looking at the number side of me says, yes, we can't sustain it. The part of me that says it's good for the community, it's good for the kids, says that we need to keep it going. Um, really, I, my thoughts are at, at this point, we're at a sink or swim state with our funds. Um, if our sales tax passes, if we fill this position, it doesn't matter, right? We could keep our recreations, hopefully get somebody that wants to do it full-time and wants to offer more services for our youth. Um, if it doesn't pass, whether we have the position or not, the city's going bankrupt in a year and a half. Am I, am I wrong in saying that?
Uh, you, you don't have enough debt. The city doesn't have enough debt.
Sorry. Well, the city will run out of money either way in a year and a half.
Be more like disincorporation would be the option.
But my, my point is, is either way, this program's not making or breaking the bank if we keep it or do not keep it. Is that kind of fair to say? It's going to, if we get rid of the position, it's going to keep us afloat for another fifteen days?
You know, I suppose so, but I, I don't know what the, you know, school district's going to charge us for the swimming pool this year. If it'll be the same as last year, it went up from the year before. I don't know if I'll get a contractor that we pay at the same rate as Christina. I mean, there's variables in, in this budget that I'm not, I'm not willing to guarantee, right? That's why it's an estimate of ninety thousand dollars. So those, there are things that could increase, but, you know, I mean, if you want to look at it that way, I suppose that is one way to look at it. Yes.
Um, and then my other concern is I don't necessarily want our rec program to be like our police department where we get rid of it and then it's really hard for us to re-establish again within the community. Or within the city itself. Obviously much different, right? We're talking one position, we're not talking seven or eight. We're not talking a bunch of equipment. We're talking, you know, a lot less there. But I don't want to see something that goes away. And then it'd be a struggle to bring it back. Um, so yeah, on this one, those are just my thoughts. I'm still thinking on it, to be honest with you. So I'm going to let the others speak and then.
The good news is Evan, is the, the current financial status includes the money that, that is identified as costing this in the recreation. So it's our, there's no effect unless we make it better. Oh, by the way, we can go to the high school boosters. We can go to the school itself. We can go to the citizens of the community. We go to the corporate entities. We can go to John Mansfield. We go all over the place to get this money if we want to work that hard.
Thank, thank, uh, Mr. Frank.
I concur with David in regard to, um, knowing the people of Willows. Um, and their generosity towards things like this. Um, and you talk about the corporations that might be involved in his will. So I'm not inclined to shut this down. If the money is in the current budget, we know what the shortfall already is. As opposed to penalizing the youth for the mistakes of decisions that have been made. And, um, bad decisions, let me put it that way. Um, so I, I'm in agreement. Let's keep this in place and then let's do what we can do, working out, uh, working with service clubs and, and other volunteers. In fact, I. In fact, I, I'm going to go back to my son's youth. I volunteered and was the little league coach for a while. So I don't know how much we can rely on that type of activity and involvement too, but nevertheless, let's, let's keep it in place and let's raise the money through volunteerism. Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas.
Do we know if the majority of the sixty thousand is, is based on salaries for the rec director as well as the hired folks like the lifeguard, correct?
I, yes, I'd say that's correct. It's mostly positions.
Do we know what, what the specific cost is of each of these programs?
No, I don't know. There's just, there's just one budget for the recreation division and there's another budget for the swimming pool. Those two are separated out in the budget, but.
I'm not in favor of getting rid of the whole program. I was just wondering if there was one or two that we would offer some sort of savings that would be significant, but I don't suspect that that's probably true. So I would be in favor of, we know if we're going to be able to find a contractor, consultant that would be willing to do this?
Oh, we have one person in mind I, who I think is interested. I don't know if they know the salary yet, the hourly rate really. But we were just looking at, you know, like I said, the recreation, most of the activities except the swimming pool are separated out. And you have a swimming pool?
Yeah, for the line for it or?
Yeah, if you, if you, well, just the total budget for the, to run the swimming pool.
Yeah, so the total budget for the swimming pool would be twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars.
So the swimming pool is one of the biggest budget items and it's separated out and it would be easy to not do that program if you're looking for a way to, you know, split the baby, so to speak. All the other ones are all in the rec division budget. All those other activities are in there, including salaries.
And that's the sixty thousand dollar portion, correct?
No, it's the whole thing together. We lumped the swimming pool.
No, I know the rec, the, what's the, you said there's two separate budgets. What's the rec versus the swimming pool?
Recreation is all these other activities minus the swimming pool. For whatever reason, the swimming pool, when I got here, had its own department. I don't know why it's not in recreation and we've never had a time to clean that portion up. We've cleaned a lot of other things up, but we haven't done that yet because really it should just be in one division called recreation. I've talked to Andy about that, but, so the swimming pool and everything associated with the swimming pool program is roughly twenty-five thousand dollars minus out from the sixty thousand, and that's roughly what's in the recreation, which runs all these other programs, soccer, basketball and the jump start program.
Rick, anything further?
No, I, no, I support keeping the program.
No, I, I mean, like I said, I, I supported just my kids do it. I volunteered, coached the soccer. I know I've had family members volunteer the basketball. I have family members that do both, nieces and nephews that have played in it. It's a good starting program. It leads to their youth sports and school and I think taking that away from them is going to be a, a hard pill to swallow. I think that, you know, I'd like to see it strengthened and hopefully with the sales tax measure, we can hopefully do that. But I mean, considering the fact that if we're going to go broke, we're going to go broke whether we remove this or not, I would say let's keep this going.
Very good. Thank you. No, I, I agree absolutely. I, I agree to move forward with a contract replacement for the recreation manager. Christina has done an awesome job. She's been fantastic. She's a huge loss. I understand. I definitely understand. But if we can, we have the budgeted funds and I believe we should stay within the existing budgeted funds and continue the programs. You know, and the swim pool is a, is a major part of that. We have a very, an outstanding relationship with the Willows Unified School District in reference to the current pool, pool contracts. I definitely recommend just, you know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Button.
I would like to ask staff to provide me with some breakdown of the costs so when we begin the fundraising, we can identify and prioritize where we're asking the folks of the community to help us. And if there's any, and I hope there are none, parameters that we have to use in order to collect the funds and hold them or present them to the city or whatever mechanism you would like so that we can, you know, you know, ask for money and give it to you and put it somewhere and then hold it and then identify and keep track of it is always transparency and all that so that we can see. And this is beset, because the sixty was actually the, a remaining amount of this fiscal year and the entire next fiscal year, if I remember correctly, then we have time to raise this money. I mean, we can raise it over time in increments. So anything you can do to help, because we're going to go raise this money.
Okay.
No harm, no foul. Done.
If there's a question I can ask, when, does Little League rent the baseball fields that are on the city property to use?
I, I believe that they pay a fee to use those as well as the softball leagues.
Okay. Is there a chance we can get the, how much that is coming into that? Because that would be going towards that rec budget, correct? Or is that going?
No, that's correct. It's going towards the recreation budget. I believe we should be able to, to pull those if we got into enough detail on it, we should be able to do that. Specifically the rental of the fields you're, you're speaking to and those other things outside of these rec programs.
Because I know when we had the travel ball team there for a couple of years, we would rent the softball fields to run the lights because it was, you know, dark at five sort of thing. So we needed the lights to practice still and stuff like that, so.
Those are revenue functions that are included in that recreation budget. So we could, we should be able to split those out and give you rental field fees versus what we bring in for these rec activity.
And just kind of see what we're, we're, we're currently at, you know, I mean, you know, just make sure we're prepared with what other cities are charging, you know, their Little League to rent the fields, then I'd like.
We are doing the master fee. That's included in that, the overhaul of the master fee schedule.
Looking at all those.
Yeah, we are looking at that.
Very good. Along the same lines, Mr. Bentonport, the seventeen thousand dollars in, 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 on the revenue side from the original sixty thousand dollar budget, does that include those baseball?
Yeah, that would be all of those fees, including the, the programs listed and then the, the fees of the renting the field, softball tournaments, those kinds of things. So, so total revenue and a combination of those.
So we've already subtracted the revenue from that sixty thousand.
Oh, okay. Perfect. That's what I was, okay, that's where I was, okay, that's.
And that sixty thousand is annual. So we have a half fiscal year left. That's where we came up with the ninety thousand.
Thirty thousand and then the night, the next year after that. Gotcha.
Well, yeah, just to, just to conclude my thoughts, recreation's obviously important. All, all three of my kids were involved in, in all of these different aspects of recreation. Matter of fact, my youngest daughter was a youth basketball coach for Carol when Carol was a recreation director here. And Kitty couldn't get paid because I was on the city council. So, so she volunteered her time as a youth basketball coach, but just wanted to point that out. So Marty, would you prefer a motion or council consensus?
I don't think you need to think of motion. I got the message.
Good luck. Good luck.
We're going to need it.
Yes, absolutely. Thank, thank you very much. Moving on to item six C, disposal of city assets property. Discuss the possibility of selling city-owned assets property as a source of one-time revenue generation and if appropriate, direct staff to conduct additional research and return to the council with recommendation. Before I move on to six C, I'm sorry, got ahead of myself. Item six B, is there any public comment in reference to item six B that we just discussed? Ms. Ponciano, please. Sorry.
I just wanted to bring attention to the jump start program. That's what was being referred to, I understand. I wasn't sure if you all know what that is. Jump.
My three-year-old does it. Yep. It's beautiful program. He loved it. He hated it when we had to stop or when it stopped.
Because it's a national program that is geared to helping children be ready for kindergarten. And I was just wondering if there were funds available for this program. I'm a little confused why it's part of recreation, but I wondered if we could look at funds for that elsewhere.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your input. Thank you very much. Any further public comments, Mr. Asbury?
Thank you, council, mayor, vice mayor. You made a great decision. The cost of running this program this next year is half of what the normal interest on that loan would be. Just round figures. The reason the swimming pool had its separate budget, because of people were donating the money and we wanted to kept separate.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, thank you. Moving back to item six C, disposal of city assets property. Discuss the possibility of selling city-owned assets property as a source of one-time revenue generation and if appropriate, direct staff to conduct additional research and return to the council with the recommendation. This item was requested by Mr. Sprague. Mr. Sprague?
Yes, you have a few pictures there that I provided you. These are screenshots from, of the properties that I'm talking about, screenshots from Google Maps. The first one that you take a look at is three lots on Butte and French Street. My immediate perusal, without digging into too much research on it, appears that these lots do have sewer and water and P G and E available to them. And as you can see by the picture, most of the off-site improvements are already in, the sidewalk curb and gutter in the street and so on. So it seemed like a suitable piece of property to sell to potential builders. Right now, we have a shortage of single-family homes available on the market if you talk to the realtors. And I think this would be a good opportunity that we could get some funds. My immediate reaction is that these lots ought to have some retail value of something north of fifty, maybe as much as sixty thousand dollars a lot, in knowing what properties sell for in the city of Willows. Second on the list is, are four possible lots at, on Ventura Street at Wood Street, Highway one sixty-two. There is a little bit of a problem with these lots. If you look further on the left-hand side of the picture, you'll see a row of, I think, four or five houses there that Harry James built probably in the mid-eighties. When I relocated back to Willows in nineteen eighty-nine, I looked at the, this particular piece of property and the problem that I had with it at that time because of the market conditions and so on, that these had even a decent price of ten thousand or fifteen thousand dollars a potential lot, it still was not feasible to build because the sewer and water would have to be brought down from where Mr. James ended his project down there. But given the current circumstances of real estate market and a typical three-bedroom, two-bath house, sixteen hundred square feet is selling somewhere around four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or so, this could be possibly feasible if the price were ripe on the land. Second is, or third is possible two lots on Yolo and East Sycamore. These two lots, if you look on the property or on the parcel map that I provided, as well as somewhat problematic in that they're two narrow lots, but with a lot line adjustment and with some creative design work, I think a decent house, two-bedroom, one bath, two-bedroom, two and, two-bath house could probably be designed and still meet the setback requirements, et cetera. The point is that those, that four, or those, what is the total, probably about nine vacant lots have a retail value, in my opinion, something north of five hundred thousand altogether, which I think would go a long ways to offsetting some of our shortfall in the current budget if and when they sold. And I do not see these lots being feasible for any future use of the cities. So I see no point in hanging on to them. I see that we could generate new property taxes, albeit as, as Andy Heath presented last time, that out of the property tax that might be generated out of a house of this size would be four thousand dollars a year, the city would only receive something around fourteen or fifteen percent of that property tax. But it would be also another building, another home that would be paying into the sewer fund and hopefully a new family that would be living in the city, that would be shopping here, spending time here and so on. So again, I, I propose the concept of putting those empty lots onto the market and for sale. The last picture you'll see are two homes that we, the city owns that are just out here on Lassen Street. If you want to refer to the parcel map, it can help you identify a little bit of that location. If you look at, on the, on the upper side of the parcel map here, you'll see item three or parcel three, two and four and five. Two, three and four are in fact this, the city hall. Item four is the parking lot that's immediately to the south of us here. And then parcel number five is actually Lynn, is Lisa Davis's property. And then six and nine are the two city-owned houses. And then circle in ten is a parcel that the city currently owns. It was used most recently as a staging for the location for the construction crews doing the remodel on the, on the courthouse. But the point is that there's two houses that could be sold that probably have a market value of, my guess is north of two hundred thousand dollars each. If those were sold and the lots were sold, it appears to me that we would be generating something maybe as much as seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help with the shortfall in the current city budget, if and when these properties sold. But again, my point is that I see no value in the city hanging on to those empty lots that I pointed to. And it would be debatable if it's worthwhile for the city to continue to hang on to the two houses down next to us here. Thank you.
Answer any questions if you might have. Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Mr. Button? Who would like to begin?
Well, I mean, I, I guess I would like to hear the arguments against selling on the properties if there is such an argument. My first reaction, back when you mentioned this before, Mr. Sprague, was that the guaranteed sign of failure is to start to liquidate. And I don't know if these assets have future appreciation and value to the community. I don't know that. I think as, as I see your detail, I think maybe a couple of them, yeah, let's put them on the market now. And again, I would like to hear maybe a comment as to the value that these properties have to the city, either today and the long-term versus turning them into cash now. And, but I don't even have, my, again, I, I'm not sold on either way. I think maybe you have a good point and maybe a couple of these should go and maybe, maybe the city or someone can tell me why that's not a good idea. Again, liquidating all of the down cycles, all the depressions and recessions, the folks that liquidated closed, the ones that didn't were invested in the future in some fashion survive. And I see that as a simplistic response, but it isn't valid.
I don't necessarily disagree with him. This is why I would say that big lot that's behind us, yes, let's hang on to that as the city grows, we could use that particular property. To me, that's an investment into the future for the city of Willows. But to hang on to empty lots that are in the middle of existing subdivisions, that just make no sense to me whatsoever. And yes, of course, they could inflate and, and appreciate. I don't know how long the city has owned these. I don't even know how we came about owning these. Maybe they were old houses that we tore down back in buggy days. I've, I've got no idea. But the point is that we're in a situation where, financial situation. Any of us, like I can, Rick and I can both go back to the housing market turned down in two thousand and eight. And we then had to start getting creative. I did, and I think Rick did with what he was doing, very creative in what, how we were operating the business. And in my particular case, I did sell some and I hated doing it, but I did sell some of the property that I had, that I purchased in advance for my future business and so on. But at the point that I got to and I said, hey, I've got no other alternative. Now, I look at this and I'm not suggesting that we don't have other alternatives, but I'm suggesting that this is an addition to being able to augment the budget in addition to the safety. And I see no future purpose for holding these big lot.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, there are lots on Butte Street and French. They're all zone general commercial.
They're zone, what? I'm sorry.
General commercial and they're surrounded by general commercial. Okay. So, and if you drive around, you look at the neighborhood, it's, it's basically commercial and it's, would not necessarily be conducive to residential structure, in my opinion. But more importantly, when I, I took the drive with Nataisa when I first was elected and she. First was elected and she pointed this lot and this used to be the. Where they staged public works. That was their corporate yard.
I think you're right. I've heard that before.
Corporate yard.
Is that the history?
That's where that came to be.
Okay.
I was looking at it and spoke to the Rotary Club about creating a dog park on their parks. Cause there is no park north of Wood Street. And I think that would make a a um, a nice park for the north part of town.
Which lot was that again? I'm sorry.
This is the one at Butte and French.
Okay.
Behind um, well, there's one house behind it, but it's but it's behind Bobby Lee's old grocery store.
Yeah, the old.
And on the south side of it is is um, the propane company.
On the immediate south side, yes.
South side of.
Right.
Could be lot number three there, yeah. Yeah, my thought process, I would like to explore the concept of maybe putting a dog park or some other. Park for the folks on the north side. That might be an opportunity for that one.
Agreed.
The the lots on Ventura and Wood. Um, the south third. Looks like it's zoned R one and the north two thirds looks like residential professional. Um, I would somewhat agree with you on that one. It's currently being used by a free company. Staging, assume we're getting rent?
I I do not know that. I don't know.
I don't know that off the top of my head either.
They're all over the top of it. Be curious. And we have a sign on that too, that welcome to Willows.
There's an easement there. If you look on the map, there's a short ten foot easement there. I I think it's um, what is it? Nine, nine foot twenty-one inches.
That's widened widened Wood Street, one sixty-two.
Right. And you can see where I sketched out what, right now it's it's several parcels, only forty feet wide. You can see my numbers there of doing a seventy-five foot lot, sixty-one and a sixty-one and a seventy-five, same same area.
So without sewer and water, curb and gutter. Um, might be a good spot for apartment complex.
Could be a lot.
But it but it is on coming into town, so you'd want something that looks nice there.
Right.
Yolo Street. Um. If you were to cut that in half, you'd have two lots of thirty-five hundred square feet. Yeah, so that's pretty small.
Or depending upon, again, if it works for sale, like I can look at this as a builder developer and. With my architectural skills, be able to look at that and say, I could design something that would work on that particular lot. Problematic without a doubt, but um, uh, and possibly have some uh. Easement uh, latitude from the city to be able to do something with it. But again, it's something that is the city ever going to do anything. And could it be sold?
So the question that comes is, does that require a survey? I assume it does.
I'm sorry, say again.
Requires a survey. Same way with the one on Ventura and Highway, we'd have to survey that in order to carve it up in that shape.
Yeah, yeah. But I I would put that on us on the purchaser, not on the on the city. You've got a parcel map you that uh, that identifies the property description. So put any of that engineering and that type of stuff on the burden of the purchaser, not not on. The cost associated with the sale.
Last question, the two houses on Lassen Street, do we know how much we get in rent annually?
We just increased the rent uh, this past year. I think they're a thousand dollars each. They were like seven fifty. Somewhere around there uh, before.
So those two houses bring city twenty-four thousand dollars?
I believe so. I'd have to check. I don't.
And I would agree with you on the lot behind it, lot number ten.
Yeah.
Um, as we explored the city, police department and we would have to have police facilities. Building a separate building itself, that would be a good spot for it, but my thought probably would be more about. Expanding this one back into the back parking lot, putting your parking lot over there.
I agree, and I'm not suggesting selling.
No, I understand that, but then. Um, how those two houses in the front might play as far as how we would need to design that. I don't know. Um, I would be inclined to consider. Stuff on Ventura and Wood Street. And maybe the two on Yolo Street to find out what they're might be worth. Um, but I would, I think the twenty-four thousand dollars that we receive on the two houses, which is ongoing. Might be something that I would prefer to keep. And then I'd like the one on Butte French, I think we should explore a park. That's my thought.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Rick. Uh, Mr. Hudson?
Um, yeah, first and foremost Ventura and Wood Street, um, A, if we're receiving rent. And B, if we're listed on their insurance at all. Because they have those vehicles with those lifts. I mean, I was a high school kid once. We used to find trouble. I mean, it's just. Teenagers and kids in general, right? Um, a bunch of unattended equipment like that. Uh, that's especially on city property, that's to me a no go. Um, and so I'd be really curious to A, if we're receiving rent and B. If we have received any sort of liability coverage from the company. That's cause I believe they're doing the PG&E work around town and things like that with those, but. Yeah, that's a kind of a concern as far as it comes to a litigation matter from from my standpoint. Um, I have a couple of. I guess off the wall ideas. Um. I do believe the properties can be used for good, um, rather than sitting there stagnant and just being essentially an eyesore. Um, I like the idea of a park there on the French and Butte Street, whether it be a dog park or a park for kids. Um, I like the same idea, actually, for the lot on Sycamore.
Process to probably hire um, a broker, realtor, another RFP process to select that person. Praise the properties. They have to stay on the market for a certain amount of time. Um, and my last thing that I'd like to say is that, um, you know. Rather than just looking at selling all the property or some of them or this one or that one in a vacuum, I think it's better. It would be a better, it would be my recommendation as your staff person to look at all the options for revenue generation. Together holistically as a menu with the pros and cons of each and then select. What you like out of that and then go down an avenue. For example, like I mentioned to some of you, if not all of you before. We could um, take out a lease note against our properties and actually, you know. Borrow against our properties and keep them until this the council set up uh, has developed a comprehensive set of goals on. How they want to dispose of these properties. We could, you know, put off paying our POB. I know that's not a popular idea, but I'm just saying. It's one revenue option for delaying payments on the pension obligation bond. We could wait until the sales tax passes and turn right around and then leverage against that and borrow against futures. Sales tax as like sort of a gap loan to ourselves until that sales tax comes in. Those are just a few of the things that are that are options and I would just recommend that they be looked at comprehensively and not look at revenue generation. Individually in a vacuum, making individual decisions. And I would recommend doing that a little later in the spring because. The bandwidth right now amongst staff is to focus on sales tax measure. An assessment about a police department and what that would cost and some sort of educational program for the public. So that we can start getting out the word once the council has made a decision on a sales tax and really helping people to understand why this is so important. And in my mind, that's the critical path over the next three months. And then when we've kind of got that launched, we could come back and make a full presentation of all your revenue generation options. As an interim measure until the sales tax.
Thanks, I think that's right. I I I agree with with your perspective and your comments and reference to that. Just in in uh. I I mentioned the fact that, you know, I I. Just reiterate, I do believe that Butte and French Street location would be a fantastic location for a park. As it is, you know, you know, commercially zone anyways. Uh, the, you know, all of these properties are are paid for. You know, they're all paid. These aren't, these are not ongoing costs. Uh, the the two, the the two rental properties here in one hundred block that. Pay the street nearly adjacent to city hall here. They were purchased for future police department related expansion. The city hall building before we contracted with the sheriff's office was, as you can imagine, extremely cramped. Where your office is was the police department.
Right.
Extremely cramped. It it would just, you know, it it was a.
It's hard to even imagine, actually.
Police department was put in the back of the building for some reason nineteen sixty-nine. Who knows? But anyway, uh, it is, it is what it is. It was extremely cramped. You know, back way back when I started my law enforcement career back in the late seventies, I I worked out of there for. For a little over a couple of years and I tell you, and it just got worse and worse, but but anyway. But that's, you know, the rental properties, uh, the city public works crew, uh, uh, one of those properties were were purchased. Um, uh, did extensive rehab to those those homes. They're older homes, but they're but they're very nice home. They're very nice rental. And the individuals living there have been very good tenants, very good tenants. And uh, I've been in those houses. I've been in both those houses. I've been in one of those houses very recent. It's it's, they're great, they're great, small, small homes. And they are income producing at about roughly twenty-four thousand dollars a year, you said. Uh, with with minimal cost because of the, you know, the rehab's have held up very well, minimal cost. Uh, maintenance costs and reference those properties, but again. That's purchase for future future expansion of police department. We're we're now talking about, you know, hoping to go back to a. To our own police department. We're going to have to put a police department somewhere at some point. Uh, I'd say hold off, hold up, hold up, hold off on a fire sale. And I I agree with with down the road when uh, time permits, maybe some more research. Could could be conducted, as you pointed out Marty, in reference to the different options, but. To me, this uh, selling these is akin to having a yard sale to pay next month's rent and that's not a good business model. I'm just absolutely opposed to that. The property of Ventura and Wood, I would agree. I would agree with Mr. Sprague, Mr. Thomas, and I think uh, Mr. Hudson. You know, that really cities on that for, I don't know, since price was a corporal, you know, as well as other properties. But uh, uh, it's basically just used, been used for funeral service overflow, you know, really. And uh, but and you know, I didn't, I did not ask, I meant to ask, but it just, you know, on the list of priorities, it just never. Never got a high enough priority. I assumed and one should never assume and I know better than that because we all know the three letters of the alphabet that it soon starts with, it makes one out of you. I assumed that that tree service company was paying rent as the construction firms did on on our property right next to us here by. You know, just just uh, southwest of us between here Memorial Hall for for equipment.
And they may very well be. I just don't have the answer to that. Yeah.
Boy, yeah, raises all kinds of, like Evan said, all kinds of liability concerns.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a large company.
Yeah, we'll investigate first thing tomorrow.
Thank you. I just assumed they were and I probably shouldn't, yeah. But uh, yeah, very good. But but that property, I mean, down the road, I I think, you know. Would could be viable, you know, op- you know, possibly viable option to sell, but I like to look at all the options and. I'm but I am especially, like I said, very concerned about our our excellent bond rating for our pension obligation bond. Let's not jeopardize what we have. Let's let's think about this. That's that's all I had.
Like, may I add something to that? And this is kind of directed towards Rick. I know you're working with the Habitat of Humanity with the Doctor's Building. Was that?
I've been talking with him, yes.
You have been? Um. Would there be an option for a long term lease of the property on Ventura and Wood and then build their own facility there?
I don't know if they would be in, if they do a lease like that, long term lease.
I don't know, but.
In order to turn it into a protected property, I'm certain there's some way we could work a, an arrangement. Where they could build on it.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't know what the rules are on, you know, and what the market's like for a, you know. Long term lease of thirty or fifty years to a corporation to put a building there and run their business or. That's even a a real thing, but.
I don't know your answer.
Seems like that may be another option there is then we're not losing that. Not losing that land, but we're still able to put it to you, so it's not.
I don't know how many people would really want to do that.
Oh, I'm assuming not very many, but.
I can answer that question by history. Back in the late seventies, maybe early eighties, we went into a housing recession. Problem and I worked for a company called Groupie Company out of Stock at that time. And they had a, I think it was about an eighty lot subdivision in Little Town Rockland. Came what Rockland is. And because of the housing market and that type of thing, so. Uh, Groupie Company worked out a situation where they did work for a lease on the land. Build houses and the lease had an expiration of ten years with the idea that the recession. And the the economy would restore and all that, where the people then could buy or get a mortgage that would retire that lease. And re- refinance and do it. So it's not an uncommon practice.
Okay.
You could do a ground lease. I mean, I, we, we, I worked on one of those in Berkeley with. Low income housing and a ground lease. I just not, I'm not sure if there's a market right now for it, but maybe you know better for.
That was just another option so that we're not necessarily losing the land. Um, but like I said, I I think that if. You know, the base of street project's supposed to be going through Merrill, then if we're able to leverage the property that we have. To um. Acertain other properties, then that might be a avenue to look at too, as that project goes further down the road. So I don't necessarily want to sell. Properties that we have, if we are able to leverage them in the future to continue our development as a town.
Um, one other thing to consider is also, because this, at at some point, we're going to have to do an assessment of. And evaluate the ability to bring police services back in house and establish, reestablish a police department. And through that process, I would expect that whoever the consultant ends up being, we would want them to look at. The two houses that are next door and tell us, you know, evaluate and tell us, is that a viable option to use that that space as a temporary PD? I think it's fraught with a lot of problems probably, but it'd be helpful to hear from. Somebody who does this for a living to tell us what are the best properties around, you know, the other vacant lot to keep or not keep or. Is there enough room or not enough room to expand? I mean, there's a lot of extra space in this building, to be honest with you. Our whole side of the hall, I would be. You know, whole tenant improvement. The whole thing should be gutted and redone. I mean, we, each individual has, you know, ample area around them. Um, large offices. I mean, who knows? Maybe if that was structured differently, that a PD could be in there. I don't know. We have a really wide hallway. That you walk down. Do we need a hallway that wide? Um, and could it be nar- more narrow and still be eighty, ADA compliant? I mean. There's a lot of different questions that somebody who's trained and understands how to build a police department could help us. You know, sift through and figure out what really is, um, you know, possible.
And even using that lot ten that we have on our maps, we could put modulators there to start the police department and.
Also true.
To work forward from there too. I mean, there's, at least then they can remove them if we want to expand this building too, but. Like, there's a lot of options with those. And I know that's not, wasn't on the list of possible sales, but. Just it ideas that pop in the head as we're having the conversation. Um, but no, of course, I do want to say I appreciate you doing the, doing the legwork on this and bringing it to our attention. It definitely gets the wheels going for a lot of us, so I do appreciate that.
Well, the my my objective has been met, that I wanted to open up the discussion on additional things that we might be able to do. And we've started that. And now I can hear some other ideas that are being presented. So mission accomplished. Let's continue the dialogue on these other things that might do not. Not substituting, as we've been cautioned by this city attorney, but additional things to the sales tax. So. For that, I appreciate, but um, I would also point out, um, I need to be careful that I'm. Uh, I am talking with another builder developer that is possibly interested in the thirteen, twelve or thirteen acres that I used to own. I don't own it anymore and there's no financial gain for me whatsoever. But I re- uh, did design that to have a five acre city park detention, Rick, uh. Stormwater detention basin in Butte and Green Street to the north. So there is a potential, possibly. If this party is interested in being able to do something on that parcel that we could have an a a part, a good sized part. To the north side of Green Street. And so, um, but nothing's cast in concrete at this point, and at least there's dialogue for that. And all I'm trying to, I want to make it clear, there's no financial gain involved for me whatsoever. What I'm doing is reaching out to people that want to come in, potentially want to come in. What I'm doing is reaching out to people that want to come in, potentially want to come in, do some improvements here to City of Willows on some of the vacant properties.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but is that Buick, you're thinking, if I'm thinking the same empty field, is that not county?
It's in the county.
It is in county, okay.
It is in the county, and I'm working with county staff in regard to that.
Gotcha.
The issue ends up being, does it need to be annexed? The issue there is, is it does not need to be annexed. It would have to be built to city standards because it is in the sphere of influence and in the potential annexation. But it's not.
Greg, we're, excuse me, we're getting off agenda topic here. All right. Thank you very much.
But anyway, there's a potential part location there.
Cool. Uh, Mr. Hudson, anything further?
No, sir.
All right. Mr. Vod.
I I think I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
No, I'm done.
Okay, uh, I'd recommend that we, again, good discussion, continue this discussion down the road, significantly down the road when when the time is right, basically.
Sounds good.
Some, you know, we can bring this, these items back and when we have more information. Like I said, I would, I think this is premature at this time, good discussions, it's premature, especially in light of future police facilities nearby as an option, and also leverage for funding, funding that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as majority council agree with
Yes.
That?
Yes.
Proceed here. Very good. Okay. All right. Uh, direction of the council and forwarded to city manager in reference to that. Uh, moving on to item. Thank you, Mr. Sprague, for bringing that matter forward. Moving on to item seven, comments and reports, item seven A, council correspondence. I have received no council correspondence. Uh, Ms. Brown, any council correspondence?
Um, we don't have any council correspondence.
Wasn't, was not aware of any. Item seven B, count, city council comments and reports. Who would like to begin? Uh, Mr. Sprague?
I have no comments or reports.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Um, nothing really to report. I had my first transportation meeting, so that's a another learning curve. Um, but it's, it's good information. Um, it's good to see that they're working on, um, on some of the roadways. I know Caltrans is coming through and looking to do the one sixty two corridor, um, and hopefully fix the Westwood Street and Tahaema intersection is one of the things that we're kind of pushing for right now um, to try and get that ball rolling. And then as far as Glen Ridge goes, we're looking at getting a couple new buses here shortly, aren't we not?
Yes.
And they're going to be uh, hybrid, I believe.
Hybrid diesel.
Hybrid diesel. Which is, which is good because diesel lasts better, seems, those engines seem to last better than I guess engine, so. That was, that was good that we were able to still get those, so. And obviously Gary can speak more to that as he's also on there with me, so. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vod.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, I'm going to reach out to Kathy McFessel. We had been having meetings on the Monday before the council meetings, and the last two have been a little bit botched by me, so I'll correct that. I presume we will resume the meeting on the Monday before city council meetings at the senior center, assuming there's attendance and willingness to do so, Evan and others, so. Uh, Rick and I attended an evening yesterday on Monday, Monday night, and I'll let him speak to it, so he has something to say.
Thank you, Dave. You were the one that listened to it all.
Mr. Tom.
Uh, we went up to Orland to the Glen Rose um, open house that the county put on. Uh, they had three core there, and they were showing off their new facility where they would help entrepreneurs establish uh, a business. And so they have great plans. Uh, the one shining star, there was a young man, there was a senior at Chico State. So licensed real estate agent already, and he and he and his friends created a biodegradable soap, including the container.
It was self, yeah, you put it in and it went away. There was no.
So did you actually throw the thing in the washing?
Yep, absolutely. Not the box, but the e- each individual application, yes. So it was good.
So people looking forward. So a nice facility there on Walker Street, but we'll have to see what comes of that, but we attended.
Thank you, Rick. Anything further?
No.
Very good, very good.
Mr. Mayor, may I back up a quick?
Mr. Hudson, thanks.
I just wanted to back up a second. Item six C, I, did we bring, open that up to public comment?
Well, the previous, uh,
Yes, I
You know, I
I didn't want to
Not officially.
Step on your toes, so.
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, is there any public comment, or thank you, any public comment in reference to item six C? I thought maybe you raised your hand. Sorry, my apologies. Please, Mr. Ed, very good.
First of all, I think that you need to quit referring to the sale of property as a fire sale. That taints the whole conversation. I think it's big, it's good business to sell this property, not, not everything you own, all thirty some lots, but the ones that were pointed out that could be sold. Maybe advertise, like there were two separate areas that were good for apartment buildings. Everyone says there's nowhere to live in Willows. Let's put up a couple of apartment buildings. But I think we need to watch the words we say.
I still maintain it's a fire sale, but thank you very much for the comments. Any further public comments?
Over sixty years I know of Ventura has been open. Nothing has ever been built there. The other thing is Chip has been jumping up and down trying to build thirty two unit apartments in Northeast Willows.
Thank you for comments. Any further comments in reference to item six C? Okay, thank you. Back to item seven B, city council comments and reports. Mr. Hudson, did you have anything further?
No, sorry, that was.
No, okay.
I realized I misspoke in the wrong section.
No, no worries. Anything further, David, Rick? Okay, uh, briefly, uh, Mr. Hudson alluded to, uh, last Thursday on January eighteenth, uh, uh, we had a regional, our monthly regional transit committee meeting and Glen County Transportation Commission meetings. Uh, Evan gave a brief rundown. I'd like to, like to point out that at the Regional Transit Committee meeting, uh, we approved a transit operations and management contract with Perit Transit Services Incorporated, who was the sole bidder. He's been operating Glen Ride for many years and doing outstanding work, uh, you know, with the operations and management of Glen Ride. Very professional company. Like I said, they're the sole, they're the sole bidder. Uh, we approved an initial uh, uh, five year contract with extensions to those contracts. Uh, very affordable. Uh, we, uh, are contracting with, uh, Yer Creek Broadcasting and Sinclair Broadcast Group for advertising. We have, we have been doing significant advertising it uh, the past couple of years. We previously engaged with Sinclair Broadcasting, but that's television broadcasting for Univision, Spanish speaking, and then Yer Creek Broadcasting would be a mix of of uh, of radio spots of the two top stations in the market. Uh, and, uh, one of three point five and, uh, and, uh, a game, I believe. Anyway, I, HSL Radio, one of three point five. And, uh, uh, plus, uh, digital, digital advertising package as well. Other routine business conducted in reference to the Transportation Commission meeting, uh, the, uh, an amendment was made to the overall work program for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, which the year Evan indicated. We, we laid real heavy, once again, as we always do on on Caltrans, to get that repair work done in the area of Tahaema Street and Stairway one sixty two or Wood Street that was supposed to have been done last year with the, uh, construction or the repair work, the overlay work uh, over the worst parts, uh, on Wood Street, Stairway one sixty two, between Shasta Street roughly and and Tahaema Street and, uh, you know, I, our, our liaison is doing his job and doing his job well, and carrying the message. He comes over here and it's kind of like a dartboard, but you know, I can sympathize. But anyway, we continue, we continue pressing Caltrans to to get that that work done. And the future, uh, uh, total reconstruction of Stairway one sixty two within Willows, the city Willows between, uh, Tahaema Street and to the western city limits, the area of Walmart is slated now, once again, final for twenty twenty six. The years have bounced around, the numbers have bounced around. That intersection of Tahaema and Wood, uh, construction was supposed to have been done, and we have the minutes to prove that last year, last, uh, roughly September. I brought that up several times before, and it did not get done, and then I was told that a commission, part of the commission was told at the meeting last Thursday that that intersection work was going to be done in twenty twenty six. Well, that's just not acceptable. So that message went back to, back to Caltrans. Uh, just, just for public information. Uh, that's it for for those reports. Uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Benport. I'd like to thank the public works crew, the entire crew for the outstanding job that they they did, as they do each year. They're just a phenomenal job with the, with the ongoing leaf fall this year and and the work on top of all the other work that you have to do with, the crews were just, you know, phenomenal at at keeping those leaves, you know, picked up.
I won't take credit for that, but I'll give it to them for sure.
Did a great job, did a great job. Like I said, on top of everything else that they have to do. So, uh, much appreciated. Uh, with that, that's all I had. Uh, time is, uh, nine thirty four P M, and thank you for attending and have a great evening and a good rest of the weekend meeting.
Get the knees. Damn, that was all.
Very safe, Evan.
Oh, boy. But already sore.
Yeah.
Warm the knees up a little bit when you get up.
I'm going to get the weight up.